Okay, well, good evening, Littleton. This is the Town of Littleton Select Board meeting of November 9th. I'm Paul Glavy, Vice Chair, subbing for our Chair Chuck DeCoste, who may or may not be joining us later as circumstances allow. Initially, we are going to go into a, at least a brief executive session. We have a matter before us that we, we're uncertain as to whether or not it's something we should be handling in executive session or not, but in any event, we're going to be going into executive session initially with Town Council will be joining us by Zoom to discuss that issue and then dealing with it either openly or in executive session, depending upon how that conversation goes. So, and then after that, we will return at 6:30 for our regular meeting and proceed with the agenda as it has been posted. So, Board members, if someone would please make the motion.
I move that the Select Board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 1, to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and to reconvene in open session.
Okay.
Second.
It's been seconded by Select Board person Napoli, excuse me, and it requires a roll call vote, so Select Board Member Knox?
Aye.
I'll get this. Member Nordhaus?
Aye.
Member Napoli?
Aye.
Haven't been chair in a while, and the Chair votes aye as well. I would ask the other members, even if they have an issue with the interest in the issue at hand, to please step out in the hall until we confer with Council, and then we'll invite you back in. Thank you.
That's everybody correct?
Yes, please. Yep. Anyway, we're going to get right into the agenda. If the Building Commissioner and the Finance Committee Chair will indulge us and, oh, thank you. All right, great. Okay, I'm going to read the agenda, and then we will, we're fortunate to be joined by a number of very welcome and distinguished guests. First, we'll be doing the organization, Pledge of Allegiance, and then our Veterans Day proclamation and reading of mail. At, I'll ignore the time since we're off schedule here, but our item number three is the Department and Board Updates and Requests. We have a request from the library relative to one of the positions there, request from the Police Department, similarly with a personnel-related issue. Third, Elder and Human Services Department, acceptance of donation. Fourth in that section from the Town Clerk, approval of the town reprecinct map. Fifth is the Town Treasurer, bond sale authorization. Item number four is Public Input Members' Updates. Then we will be having a joint meeting with Council on Aging to receive senior center update from LLB Architects. Following that, we will have FY '22 Tax Classification Public Information Session, first of two anticipated sessions on the tax classification. Following that, we have the Select Board discussions on three topics: reorganization of the Building and Land Use Department, discussion of the appointment of the Assistant to the Town Administrator, and then further discussion on the Fire Chief hiring process. We also have some follow-up from the Town meeting, which was held on October 25th, 2021, involving a sale of land, transfer of land, grant of anisement, and road acceptance, and then a general Town Meeting recap. We then will have the Town Administrator and Assistant Administrator updates on topics involving the Board of Health vacancy, collective bargaining agreements, notification of resignation of DPW Director Chris Stoddard, and the NMA Association Annual Conference Notice for January 21st, 22nd, and 2022. And then finally, approval of minutes from September 27th and October 18th prior to an anticipated adjournment at 8:25. So, with that, if I, the Board will, ready, we will have the Clerk lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right. Mr. Insaldi, would you lead us through the, I think we have three related topics relative to upcoming Veterans Day?
We do, Mr. Chair. The first one is, we have a proclamation in the Board's packet, Board claiming Thursday, recognizing Thursday as Veterans Day. The second item is our Veterans Agent John Borowski will come in and discuss what's, what we have planned for Thursday. And then the third item is an employee recognition for retirement from the U.S. Coast Guard.
Okay. I know we've circulated the proclamation for signatures, but perhaps the Clerk can, do you have it handy there to read?
I do, I have it on my computer.
All right, well, why don't we appropriately recognize that day with the reading of that proclamation?
Whereas thousands of men and women have served our country in defense of freedom and liberty, and whereas on November 11th, 1918, the armistice was signed by the Allied Nations and Germany, ending World War I, the war to end all wars after four years of conflict, and whereas since that day, every November, people from around the nation have gathered to honor our veterans, and whereas today, we are reminded of the great sacrifices and contributions our veterans and their families have made to our country, and whereas we salute those who served our country throughout the generations with honor, patriotism, and courage, and whereas it is appropriate that all citizens remember the bravery of those who served their country, so that their dedication and sacrifices serve as a reminder of the cost of our freedom. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Littleton, recognize Thursday, November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day, and urge all citizens of the Town of Littleton to take cognizance of this event and to participate fittingly in its observance, issued this 8th day of November 2021, Littleton Select Board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Okay. Anthony, did you say John Borowski is with us, or do you want to walk us through his? Oh, John, you're sure, great.
Yeah, there he is.
Didn't see you initially. You want to please take the podium, and if you could, explain to us what the plans are for Veterans Day and the schedule?
Thank you for having me tonight. Plans are our normal Veterans Day ceremony at the Combe at 11 o'clock. We'll have a couple of speeches and the normal activity. There won't be any firing of rifles this year, but we'll have our normal activity there, a couple of speeches, then on to a couple afterwards, we're doing a small motorcade to the old burial grounds, the World War I Memorial, and Beaver Brook, and then afterwards, after that's all over with, everybody's invited to the VFW for lunch.
You're going by the Civil War Memorial at the Houghton Building, too?
Yeah, we will stop there, too. Yep, yep.
Great, thank you. Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Board members? Okay. Thank you, John. We'll see you on Thursday.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, that should be posted to our website now for Presidents.
Perfect. And another happy veteran event.
Yes, so, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, our Building Inspector, who we're thrilled to have with us, Mike Kenny, has served our country for 24 years in the United States Coast Guard and has retired, is it, the past month?
October 1.
October 1. So, we have a proclamation in the Board's packet, as well as Representative Osiero's here, who would like to recognize Mike Kenny for his service to our country.
All right. Representative Osiero, would you like to read your proclamation? You have it with you, we have a copy, but you've got the real thing.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. It's quite, quite an honor to be here tonight. I'm just like myself, who's from a military family, and I served in the House Representatives on the Veterans Affairs Committee for so many years, it's really, it's quite an honor to be here to recognize your sacrifice, your family's sacrifice, the work that you've done in the service to your country, and on behalf of the Massachusetts House Representatives, we wanted to honor your service. And be it known to all that the Massachusetts House Representatives offer sincere congratulations to Michael Kenny in recognition of your retirement after 24 years of dedicated service as a member of the United States Coast Guard. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses their hope for future good fortune, given this 9th day of November 2021, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and State Representative Jim Osiero. Congratulations.
Thank you, Representative, and I would add for the record that we have the Board's proclamation as well here to offer you, and I think it's been signed by all the members, and...
Want Matthew to read it?
Yeah, actually, you want to?
You can read it?
Why not? It speaks to some of his specific accomplishments, so I'm sure no one will mind if we hear some more details about Mike's service.
Whereas Michael Kenny has served 24 years in the United States Coast Guard Reserve, and whereas while serving at United States, United States Coast Guard Thunder Bay, Michael Kenny deployed for Operation Sail 2000 to New York City to provide security operations, deployed for ice-breaking operations for flood relief of the main Kennebec River, and deployed for security escorts of oil tankers and LNG tankers in response to 9/11, and whereas while serving at United States Coast Guard Station Point Allerton, Michael Kenny assisted with multiple recovery missions. And whereas while serving at the United States Coast Guard Thunder Bay and the United States Coast Guard Sector Southeast New England Engineering Division, Michael Kenny maintained and repaired small boats and ships, and whereas while serving at United States Coast Guard Port Security 301, Michael Kenny maintained and repaired the Unit 6 transportable port security boats, six prime movers, three trailer at 110 kilowatt generators, and 12 tents with ECUs, and whereas while serving at United States Coast Guard Port Security 301, Michael Kenny deployed twice overseas for Operation Enduring Freedom to the Joint Task Force Guantanamo Bay, Cuba, for waterside security and anti-terrorism force protection, and whereas while serving at United States Coast Guard Port Security 301, Michael Kenny deployed overseas for Operation Iraqi Freedom, Combined Task Group 56.5, for waterside security and anti-terrorism protection of high-value targets, waterways, and ports in the Northern Arabian Gulf. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Town of Littleton, the Littleton Select Board presents this proclamation to Michael Kenny to celebrate and commemorate his retirement after 24 years of military service in the United States Coast Guard Reserve, issued this 8th day of November 2021, Littleton Select Board. It's very impressive.
All right. Remember that, and thank you for your service.
I got to put my foot. Coming down, I know my wife and my kids.
You're here.
And then, Mr. Chair, if I may just add one more thing, we did also receive an official citation from State Senator James Eldridge, also recognizing Mike's service, and it is signed by the President of the Senate and Clerk of the Senate.
All right, nice. Proclamation for your Wall of Fame. Okay.
Two more quick things in the packet.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We received a letter that was addressed to Select Board Member Nordhaus from the Littleton Conservation Trust, and also recognizing the Board, Town Administrator's Office, the DPW, for the cleanup of the old orchard equipment that was on the Sarat doublet forest. So, there's a picture up there, that was really a pretty messy area, and our DPW crew really did an outstanding job cleaning that up. So, just to recognize all those that participated in that.
I appreciate you're involved, and I had a chat with Steve the other day, Steve...
Witten.
Witten, yeah, and just, and I was asking about this particularly, but this comes at a time of year that we wouldn't instinctively think is particularly busy for them, but a lot of their activities, in terms of road repair, end November 15th, so they're under a very busy timeframe right now, and yet we're able to do this excellent work, too. So, you know, their day-to-day service, we don't always see or recognize, but definitely appreciate it.
It wasn't just a matter of throwing stuff in a truck. They had hydraulic fluid and oil, and they had to cut some pieces up, and it was a very serious effort, and they made, they did a beautiful job. They raked it clean, they restored it to its beautiful natural state. I can't thank them enough for the work they did, and they did a great job, and I really appreciate it.
Great.
Okay, and the last thing, Mr. Chair, is we received a notice from the Department of Public Utilities, National Grid has to do a three-year efficiency, energy efficiency plan, so they have it a public hearing on July, I'm sorry, July, December 1st, 2021, and December 2nd, and the Times have posted that National Grid will go before DPU, and if any resident wants to follow along, the information's in the packet.
Okay, great.
And that's all we have.
Thank you. All right, then our next topic items are Department and Board Updates and Requests. The first one would be the library's request to change a senior library tech position into a senior librarian position. I'd either ask Anthony to set us up for this one, and Sam, please come forward, and Mark, whoever wants to be heard, by all means.
Sam Alvera's Library Director. So, just to give you a little bit of background...
By the way, it looks pretty cool, doesn't it, looking across the pack, a lot of the library open tonight? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you all for coming and for your kind words. So, last month, my Head of Circulation, Andy Curran, retired after 34 years, and I ended up hiring internally my head, my senior library tech, Jenna Cantino, and so now that has left open a senior library tech vacancy. So, after looking at the staffing for the new library, I think it makes more sense to change the senior library tech position into a teen librarian position. I think the teens have a new department now, it's a dedicated space, they're really going to need someone that has the knowledge and the know-how to really help them, unlike in the previous library. So, we think we can do this with net budget, budget neutral at 30 hours, but what we really think we can do, use is 37 and a half hours, and that would be about an additional $5,000. We definitely would, I think, Mark, we'll talk to you how we could work that out as far as paying for that, whether out of the library's budget or shuffling some money around as far as the library part account. So, really, this is a necessity for the, for the new library. We have a great new teen space, we have teens coming into the library every day, even since we opened last week, and this is really a position that I think makes sense.
So, to add a little bit to what Sam said about the, so we have a dedicated team room. On Friday, I was there, all day on Friday, actually. By 2:15, there were six teens in the teen room, every computer was in use. Today, I was there, I just happened to be there for something else at 2:30. All four study rooms were in use by high schoolers, plus the meeting room downstairs. So, we are drawing the younger set in, they have a dedicated room that we'd like to staff more full-time, and as Sam said, at 30 hours, it's budget neutral because of replacing Andy with someone at a lower step, but it would be better to add someone to a higher, which will cost a few thousand dollars.
And Jenna was already a benefited position, so this would, wouldn't be adding a benefited position, this would be just changing one benefited position into a different one.
Okay. Anthony, has this gone through all the internal reviews that it's appropriate?
So, what the ask is, is, and, is for the 30-hour position and not for the 37. 37 obviously creates an issue as to where we come up with the additional funds. So, in the memo that Sam prepared, 30 is something that they feel that they can, that they can cover, so if the Board would like to go forward with that, then that would be our recommendation is right now to address the 30, and then additional hours go through the budget process.
Right, okay. Finn comes at least aware of this, or are you aware of this?
I am now. Well, I mean, this will probably have to be discussed.
Presents itself as budget neutral for the remainder of this year, correct?
Well, unless the hours are being added immediately, then we, we need to find a source to fund that, but yes, going forward, this will have to, have to go to Town Meeting, correct?
Right. Doesn't sound like the impact would hit because of the discrepancy between the prior occupant, right, and monetarily, it wouldn't be a change until the proposed next year's budget?
So, in 30 hours, in 30 hours, it's effectively budget neutral.
But we are asking for 37 right now, correct?
No, 30.
30, till the end of the year? Okay.
The additional will go through the budget process, Gary.
Yep, okay, got it.
Board members, any questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What's the rationale for 37 and a half? I'm not disputing it, but is it that you won't attract someone, or is it that there's that much work? And why not 40, I guess?
Really, it's, yes, there's, so, really, this would be a teen and semi-adult librarian position, so we also like someone that can help with when the teens aren't there. So, you know, the teens, they go to school for most of the day, so we'd like someone to come in and do adult programming also, you know, work with maybe COA, do that sort of thing. So, really, 37 and a half would allow that, that person in that position to cover all of that.
And then in our packet, we have the figure of $7,900 for the 37 and a half hours, is that accurate?
Yes.
Or as best you can determine at this point?
Right, and actually, it's probably less than that now, because when I created this, it was about a month ago, so it would be...
I see, okay. That's all I have, okay.
So, we do think we could also attract a different candidate by offering more hours, right? So, when you're only offering 30 hours, you're going to get, you know, someone that wants pure, more time off, basically, right?
And that's been the discussion we've been having throughout with hiring some of our department heads, is by stretching that to 40 hours, we're able to attract a different caliber of candidates, so, and also when you're, we have, there's a few positions that were identified with the 20 hours that we're paying benefits for, certainly, there's a bigger bang for our buck, too, if we have them working 40 hours, where we're paying 40 hours. So, I think that there's a greater conversation to have during the budget process about some of that and look into that.
So, if, if we're asking for 30 now, would we hire them with the expectation they'd work 30, and then explain to them that it might be 37? I mean, how, how's that going to work?
Sam, or Mark?
So, I think, well, we could make that explanation, but then I, what happens if we don't get the approval for 37?
Right.
So, then it could cause other strife later on, so...
I guess what the question is, would she be willing to go to 37 and a half if that was available to her July 1st?
So, yeah, so, we can, we can lay out the expectation that we're hoping for 37, but that doesn't, but if it doesn't come through the process, that might mean that we lose that person that was expecting to go to 37 over this, you know, in the summer, if we don't get that.
Yeah, it was just a hypothetical, I don't, I don't think the Board's looking for right now, I think they're talking about the 30 hours.
But the likely person is aware of...
The possibility.
So, we would have to let them know that it's possible or possible probable, but then if it doesn't come through, then, you know...
Then they're at 30.
Yeah. Okay, good, thank you. Other than that, I guess we're, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Select Board vote to approve the library director's request to change the vacant senior library technician, Grade 6, into a young adult and reference librarian, Grade 9, Step 1 position, effective November 9th, 2021.
Motion's made by Member Nordhaus, seconded by Member Knox. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, ayes have it, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony, the Police Department requests?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a request from Chief Pinnard. Chief Pinnard's looking to approve a full-time communications officer, which was currently a part-time, and based on the demands, and I think that we saw that in the news a few weeks ago, that communications dispatches are really high in demand, and certainly the chief has needed the services of this individual to exceed the 20 hours, which therefore brought up the question of employee benefits.
In fact, Bill Harold was all over our television sets last week, weren't you? Looking good, too, I might add. Chief?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for having me tonight for the agenda. So, if you recall, I was here a year and a half ago, and we put three part-time communications officers on. Those three communication officers brought us to a total of four part-time communications officers. Since the year and a half, we're down to pretty much two part-time communications officers, one of them who has really stepped up to the plate and has worked on an average of 40 to 60 hours a week, which HR kind of questioned about benefits as to why we're not giving them benefits at this point in time. So, we started looking at the budget. Anthony and I had a long discussion in regards to E-901 money and support funds and the grant that I applied for a year and that we receive. Currently, we have at a minimum four open overtime shifts a week, that's, that are open shifts because of EMD that we have to fill. That's $48,000 a year if we pay each one of those shifts into overtime. That, coupled with the $37,000 from the support grant, is more than enough for us to support having another FTE and trying to acquire another part-time communications officer down the line. This, this position is needed within our department. It goes without saying that they're a lifeline for our department, for the Fire Department, highway for light and water. They're the ones that are there when we call. They're the actual first responder to every scene that we go to. So, I, you know, I just, I know it's going to come out, you know, as a bottom-line budget or whatnot, but yes, we have this money in the budget, we have enough for the grant and support that we can do this, but I do understand that as another FTE, and that it does put a little burden on the town, but we need this.
In the, in conversation with you earlier, I mean, the point that was drove home to me was, through your own stewardship and your prior chiefs, you know, the delicate balance between what's best to fill shifts with overtime and then what, you know, when the reality is, is the town best served by having full-time, we're kind of at that point here right now by activity and, and the reality on the ground.
You're absolutely correct, and, you know, and Bill, if you wanted him to speak, he can speak to this as well. The burnout rate for the overtime and the force-ins, it's not like we can just, ah, we won't answer the phones tonight. We have to have someone in that seat to answer the phones for them, so, you know, if you're getting forced, you know, eight, 10...
We've kind of exhausted that approach to it, I guess, is the way I read it, you know? We've got as much mileage as we can.
As we could, and now it's time to, to step up.
Yeah. Are the Board members questions?
Just one, just to clarify, so I understand, so you're saying by hiring this position, you won't have to pay overtime because there'll be enough regular time hours, and that's how you're going to offset it?
We're still going to have overtime for vacations, personal time, but there's going to be no open shifts every week.
Okay, I see.
There will be a full-timer for every seat.
So, and you meant, you said there is going to be an impact to the town because it's a benefited position?
It is a benefited position, but in speaking to HR, we kind of have to offer this part-timer benefits now.
Okay.
So, it's kind of a wash.
Because it's a part-timer who's taking some of those overtime shifts, right, anyways?
He's working legit, and he asks year and a half, his average is 40 to 60 hours a week.
You getting into child labor laws at all here?
Shh, hey, hey, we've recruited them young, but not that young.
Okay. Any further questions?
No.
Okay, then, I believe there's a motion, Mr. Clerk?
The motion is, move that the Select Board vote to approve the police chief's request to hire a full-time communications officer, and I move that the Select Board...
Well, we're going to get into the second one, we haven't been introduced yet, right?
We can do that, yes.
Should we just do one at a time?
Well, we do one at a time, give them a chance to do the introduction of the...
Move that the Select Board vote to approve the police chief's request to hire a full-time communications officer.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Member Nordhaus, seconded by Member Napoli. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, you got somebody in mind?
So, I asked to be on the agenda right, right after this, if, hoping that would all go well. There is the open slots, and we have a young man who's very eager to start working full-time for us. Adam Zafficopoulos came to us, I want to say four years now, when you were in high school, and he was doing an internship through the high school, sitting in on dispatch for the first hour, hour and a half every morning. He kind of grew on Bill a little bit, and Bill took him under his wing, and Adam came to us when he turned 18 and asked if he could actually work part-time. So, we put him on as a part-time communications officer, and ever since then, he's been with us, and he legit has stepped up to the plate and filled the void, helping out a lot of the full-timers, to the fact where if they're getting ordered in, he'll come in and at least reserve, you know, relieve them for at least four hours at a time, or get them so they're not working 16 hours straight. As you know, sitting in front of a screen of 16 hours is tough, and again, answering all those calls... And again, answering all those calls that come through every day is another task on them. So, I would ask the board tonight, since you did grant me the position, that we appoint Adam Zafficopoulos tonight, and just get him on board so we can get him to start working right away.
So you hear that you can reintroduce us to him?
Absolutely. Adam, come on up.
There's no pressure, you're in, but we'd like to hear from you anyway.
Introduce us, though.
I am Adam Zafficopoulos. I've been part-time with Littleton just under a year now, enjoying it, I like it a lot.
The one thing I will add, though, is, and you see four guys back here, it's not just finding someone that can come to work for us, or someone can be a police officer, or be a dispatcher, it's finding someone that's the right fit for our department, as well as our community. And Adam Rubbin Town went through the school system here, right? His part, he's going part-time right now to college, and again, part-time in college, part-time for us right now, so. We have a background behind him, he did fit in, and the guys obviously accept him because they're here tonight.
Have you welcomed Adam, and appreciate the time you've already given to the town? Have you already had your baptisms in fire to experience what it's all about?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what you're getting into.
Yes, I do.
All right. Questions of Adam, or any comments from the board members?
No.
Okay, great, then we'll move right to a motion, then.
Move that the select board vote to approve Mr. Adams Zafficopoulos from a part-time communications officer to a full-time communications officer, grade six, step two.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Member Nordhaus, seconded by Member Napoli. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Adam.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that's Jake. All right, Anthony, we're onto the elder and human services for a familiar item.
That's right, we have our elder and human services director, Liz Trivia.
Hello, Liz.
Hi. Hello, good evening. I'm here once again to request the acceptance of a donation that we received from Ed Zweeny's, who has donated to us six-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars for the purpose of supporting families and residents here in town. They have been doing this consistently for probably over a year now, and we couldn't be more grateful to them for their dedication to our department and to the residents in town. So, I'd like to request acceptance of the donation, please.
It's, boy, it's remarkable on an ongoing basis how much that Ed Howard and Ed Zweeny's does for the town. Terrific. Unless anyone has anything further to say tonight, we'll go with the motion.
I just want to let people know that Ed's very ill, and I certainly feel for him. He's, all these years, he's donated first to the library, and then to the seniors, and he has attended Third Thursday on the request of the town, and turned all that money over to the town, too, so we've been lucky to have him, and he provides a great service to the town. He's just a wonderful man.
You out there listening, Ed, we're pulling for you, and we appreciate all you've done. Godspeed. Motion, then?
I move that the select board vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, and in accordance with its policy on solicitation and acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purpose, to accept donations to the Department of Elder and Human Services from Ed Zweeny's in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars for families in need.
Second.
Okay, motion's made by Member Nordhaus, and seconded by Member Napoli. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
And thank you, and thank you, Ed. All right, Anthony, we have, we have an item of interest from the town clerk.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, she is running a few minutes late, so if we could go to the next...
Sure, sure, we could jump ahead and go to the town treasurer. So Sean won't mind getting home a little earlier, huh? All right. Bond sale authorization, anything you want to do in terms of introduction, or Sean's going to do the layup here?
Sure, yeah. So, good evening.
Good evening.
We had a few, a couple of different transactions that we just went through, one of which is wanting for part of the library design and construction project, and along with that, we had an opportunity to refinance some old debt from 2011. By doing so, we were able to save in present value money around eight-hundred-thousand dollars through favorable rates, through our strong bond rating. On top of that, we also have a ban for some of the ongoing projects that we've been working with, like the PFAS project, Wickham Ave., and then two other ones that are associated with the library pending the state grants that come in. So, a lot of moving parts there, but essentially, we're refinancing some of the old debt bonding for some of the library projects, banning for all the outstanding bands from last year, and adding an additional million to the Wickham Ave. project. So, the results were really favorable, and we got, on the new bonds, a true interest cost of 1.5 percent, and on the bands, we got around twenty basis points for net interest cost. So, really good timing on this, and it just really helped, will help the town moving forward with some of the capital projects.
Three questions for me.
Sure.
Sean, if you netted out what the refinanced stuff, what dollar figure, what we're better off with some of the refinanced debt?
Yeah, so, so in terms of cash, I think it's around four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand for each year, but present value, that's around eight-hundred-thousand dollars in savings.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's significant.
Yeah, so it was a, it was a good, you know, window. I mean, back in 2011, the markets were a little bit different on that, so we're fortunate to take advantage of rates right now, so.
And how frequently, seconded, how frequently do you reassess and reanalyze those? Is it a rolling basis, or do you have a...
So actually, for this, I started looking in the summer, because I knew the Fed was going to, well, at least they were talking about increasing rates a couple of times, so I reached out to our financial advisor and asked her to run some mockups, and then as we progressed, we kind of modeled out some situations, and, you know, the savings was significant, so we decided to pull the trigger on that. Some cases, if the interest rates are too close, it's not worth it because of the costs associated with it, but in this case...
You heard your rate, you're like, about eight-hundred-thousand dollars overtime?
Yeah, yeah, so I have all, I have all those sheets, I just got to put those, put those together, and then run the new debt service schedule, so.
Have you, the last question on my part, too soon for you to run anything with the prospective sewer borrowing, or what's your plan on that?
So, we have, currently, part of this loan is, has the role of the five-hundred-thousand dollars for the sewer design, and then last June, we have, currently, we borrowed around...
Land purchase?
We did, we covered the land purchase, and then we had another around two-and-a-half million for design and construction. So when, I think when that maturity comes up in June, we'll kind of have a good idea of where we want to go, and then using that authorization from special town meeting, we can kind of decide and game-plan going forward what their spend, spend-down is, and how to, how to plan for that.
No real reason to get into that yet, though, right?
Yeah, just because we're, you know, we're in good shape in those accounts, we still have, you know, a couple million free, so I don't want to borrow if we don't have to on that, even if rates are good, so.
Great. Board members, questions, comments?
I just want to say, eight-hundred-thousand dollars is not insignificant, so I appreciate your diligence. I also appreciate the fact that we have such a strong bond rating that we can get those rates. It's saving everybody in town a lot of money.
That's right.
And it's very important to remember that.
Yeah, and I think, and in some of those, you know, I wanted to hit on, too, is, you know, the S&amp;P report really hammered home the strong management of reserve policies, and those things that really, you know, come into play when we have, we had a call in late October with S&amp;P going, going through it, and, you know, they were significantly impressed with how we managed things, and especially our stabilization reserve accounts, and how we progressively fund our long-term liabilities.
Fantastic.
Kind of a slam dunk there, but you just got to keep it up, so.
That's right, that was, good. Okay, I don't know if anyone else from the finance team's here that wants to speak at all to this, or...
Oh, sure, yeah.
Bask in the glory, jump in, why not?
Politician only, Benjamin, Finance Director, I just want to thank Sean, because the eight-hundred thousand, you know, I want to illustrate, that's a fifty-thousand dollars a year budgetary savings that he, he did on his own. I want to thank him for that. And also, when you brought up the question about borrowing as far as the sewer project, we would probably look at grant funding before we would look to borrow, and that's something that Sean and I have discussed, and something else that we'll be bringing back to you when we talk about the Immune Can Rescue Plan Act, so I just want to make you aware of that. And thanks, Sean, again.
Thank you. Finance Committee, any comment here?
No.
You got to try hard to hide that money before anyone spends it?
It's all good news, so.
Okay, good, then I guess we're ready for motion?
All right, I move that the select board vote to authorize the form of the vote prescribed by bond counsel, a copy of which is attached here, too, and made part hereof, relative to the refinancing of seven-million-eighty-thousand dollars in 2011 general obligation bond, the sale of a five-million-two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar general obligation bond, and the sale of a six-million-four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-dollar bond anticipation note.
Second. Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. Any further discussion?
Actually, I do have, just because we received an updated motion from the packet that was sent, and I think what you read was from the packet.
It was, yeah.
We do have...
Thank you for catching that, Joe.
Yeah, we do have revised, and it's divided into two motions, because it's listing out the projects on the screen.
Want to withdraw that motion?
I will withdraw the motion I just read, and read a new one.
Please.
Move that the select board vote to adopt the form of the vote prescribed by bond counsel, a copy of which is attached here, too, and made part hereof, relative to the sale of a five-million-two-hundred-and-five-thousand general obligation bond of the town for the following projects. One, refund two-million-seven-hundred-and-seven-thousand-five-hundred-dollar general obligation bonds dated April fifteenth, 2011, and two, two-million-four-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-five-hundred-dollar library design and construction authorized October twenty-eighth, 2019, Special Town Meeting, Article thirteen, and May sixth, 2019, Special Town Meeting, Article five, dated November eighteenth, 2021, and maturing April fifteenth, 2031, to Raymond James and Associates, Inc., at a true interest cost of 1.506027 percent.
Second. Motion made in amended form by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. Any further discussion? Thank you again, Joe Layden, that is. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Sean, thank you, team. And the timing is terrific.
And then, do we have a second motion?
Yes, there was a...
Second motion?
There was a second.
All right.
Move that the select board vote to adopt the form of the vote prescribed by bond counsel, a copy of which is attached here, too, and made part hereof, relative to the approval of a six-million-four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-dollar bond anticipation note dated November nineteenth, 2021, sold to TD Securities, and maturing November eighteenth, 2022, at 0.231086 percent net interest cost for the following projects. Library construction, two-million-three-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, ten-twenty-nine-nineteen, Special Town Meeting, Article thirteen, Wickham Ave., Wells, two-million-eight-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, five-seven-eighteen, Annual Town Meeting, Article nineteen, water treatment, PFAS, eight-hundred-and-twelve-thousand, ten-twenty-eight-nineteen, Special Town Meeting, Article twelve, and sewer design, four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, ten-twenty-nine-eighteen, Special Town Meeting, Article ten.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt one more time on this item. As board members know, whenever we do bond authorizations...
A lot of things to sign.
We have a lot of things to sign, so we have plenty of time throughout the night. That's first for only Matthew.
Ha-ha!
So, yeah, he's, he's special. And then the rest, as we go through, there's one packet that members just sign. Once, there's another that then you have to sign twice, so apologies for all the paper that's associated, but your signatures are truly worth this money.
Right, and you're probably not going to leave until we sign them all, right?
I probably should stick around.
All right, well, we'll try to sign quickly, then. Thank you, and I noticed the clerk has joined us tonight, and Anthony, are we ready to move on? We are, we are. Madam Clerk, if you want to come up and join us, good to have you here. You've been doing some, doing some map making, have you?
Well, I haven't, but the state has.
Okay.
So, basically, you do have before you a, what can you do, a form to sign tonight based on the changes that the state has made on our three precincts, from twenty-ten precincts to our twenty-twenty precincts. And the biggest change is people that were previously in precinct three are now, I mean, precinct one are now in precinct three, and it's mostly in the lake area, and we do have two maps, the twenty-ten map and the twenty-twenty map, which kind of shows, it's not a lot of changes, but due to our increase in our residents, and Anthony and I keep going back on this, but the state is actually going to be giving us a little bit of a recap to our town clerks, because there's such a diversity in what we have for our numbers in our state system, and what the federal government has in their numbers. So we're, according to the federal census, we're at about ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-nine. I'm a little over nine-thousand.
So they know about a thousand people that we don't know about?
Yeah, about, yeah, about six-hundred people that are in the town of Littleton supposedly that I'm unaware of. Who knows where they're hiding, but they're, they're there somewhere. But the interesting part is that we have to share with the state, and the state shares with the federal government, but it's not reversing. So hopefully, we're going to be able to get that information somehow, and they will get it to us.
And the population distinction of ten thousand has a lot of implications in state law for us.
It does.
A lot of things, like veterans aging being full-time, and there's some other things, you know.
And so that's the difficult part, because if I don't have those numbers and those people in my state system, how do I, how do we make those changes?
Yeah.
So they're giving me the numbers on our twenty-twenty map, showing where the people are supposedly at, you know, but I don't have the people, so I don't know how I justify the numbers, but they're, they're showing the changes. And so by January, they're supposed to be sending out letters to all the people where they're changing from the precincts. That's their job, and so if anybody shows up in May and they're in the wrong precinct, don't look at me. But we will, you know, if anybody's interested, you know, I can show you the map.
And I assume the map will also be on your website, right, on the town website?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to get it up on the website. Once you approve it and say it's good to go, and you sign the paperwork, I send it into the state, and they will as well put it up on the state website.
All right, well, I'm sympathetic to your problems with the federal government and the state, but our, our role here is much easier. We just vote okay, and you can be on your way, right? There's a motion, and any discussion for the board members, or actually for the, I'll open it up to the audience in large, if you have any questions relative to what's going on here, it's a thing that happens every ten years, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, yes.
And it just is presented to us as like, you know, the precincts?
Yes, yes, yes.
And the map making, again, is done by the Secretary of State's office, not by you?
That's correct.
Okay, so, all right, without any further comment or questions, then, I would entertain a motion, if there is one.
I move that the select board vote to accept, as presented by the town clerk, the twenty-twenty re-precincting map for the town of Littleton.
Second. Okay, the motion's been made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
And for the board, the document that Diane was referencing will also be sent around for all of your signature.
Okay. Did you know he was going to keep buttoning like this? He's doing a great job, Mr. Chair. Great job. Actually, yes. He caught us on the earlier one. That was good. Okay. Hope you'll indulge us for a moment. I might want to get this stuff flowing while it's in front of us.
The treasures. Yeah, no, yep. That one too.
Okay. Then the next item is public input and member updates. I think folks have heard, you know, we, for the past several months, have been operating with some regulation of our public input session. This is a 10-minute agenda item, and individual speakers, if they have something to say, are allowed to speak for no longer than two minutes. And we ask you to come to the microphone after being recognized if you do. And once we proceed through that, we will move to any board member updates. And I don't see any citizen updates. Oh, Mr. Zeldin, you're going to prove me wrong? Yeah?
Yeah, no, they missed a couple.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Michael Zeldin, 11 Lowen Street. I'm here as both a citizen and as a member of the Board of Health. And the occasion is, I'd like to thank the residents and property owners and business owners of the town for leaving in, helping, staying the course, being very well disciplined during a very trying time with a virus and a pandemic. Relaying from the Board of Health our appreciation for what the town has done. Also, we're also very pleased and wish to acknowledge the importance of vaccination, heavily emphasized by the fact that Anthony Insaldi arranged for and was able to and continues to be able to provide vaccination to the younger set and the older set. And I'm here to, as it were, just piggyback on what he's done and suggest to the general public, anyone who has not been vaccinated, please consider to do it because the more folks in town that are vaccinated, shall we say, the easier and safer it will be whether or not towns around succeed or fail at their efforts. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right. Any other citizen input? If not, board member updates. Mr. Knox?
Nothing at this time.
Great. Mr. Nordhaus?
I just want to talk about the library opening. Boy, it's a beautiful building. I think one of the things that really struck me was the names, all the names around town on all the nooks and all the windows and all the chairs. It just really, it kind of reminds me of Castle and the Trees when we all pulled together and built that. It was just, it's a heartwarming scene. And I was very touched to see Doug and Sherry Gore's name on the wall. They were my next-door neighbors for 15 years, and during that time, they donated anonymously to the, to people in town. And it's just wonderful to see their legacy, like giving to something, something in the community. So, yeah, I really, I really had a wonderful experience there on opening weekend, and it's a place that the town should be proud of.
Terrific. Yeah, I will echo that. I was delighted to be there for the ribbon cutting as well. And if you haven't already had an opportunity to go tour your library, oh, please do. You're going to be delighted with both the functionality it offers and improved state inside and then the views and just the calming, peaceful atmosphere that it provides by the way it's been thoughtfully nestled into that hillside. It's just terrific. Center point, or one of the center points for the town. Let's see, Selectman Napoli.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to say thank you to Town Administrator Insaldi and Dr. Clinchy and everybody else involved with the Vaccination Clinic that took back, took place last night. I was honestly very taken aback when I pulled into the middle school and I saw the setup and the buses and just all the parents and the kids. Just seemed so excited to have that opportunity to get vaccinated. It was really very well-run, and it was really, I think, a testament to our community as a whole. You know, we as a Select Board had talked about, you know, the importance of vaccinating and what we could do as a community to help combat COVID. And that was one of the things that we, you know, talked about was, you know, people getting vaccinated. So it was wonderful. I think there was 400 vaccinations total students last night that were vaccinated, but I just wanted to really acknowledge the work that our town administrator has done and his team to help bring that to Littleton. Not once, I think it was the third time the vax bus has been here.
Third time, yes.
Yeah. And just the fact that we were one, were we the first community or if not, one of the first communities to...
One of the first, yeah.
Yeah. So just again, that was a wonderful night for Littleton. Just, it really was. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. If I could just add, Mr. Chair...
Sure, absolutely.
I should have mentioned that earlier, too. I just want to thank staff. Staff really did a lot in stepping up and hanging around last night. And, you know, I was looking at my phone earlier because our PR consultants texted me and told me that we actually got a shout-out from Governor Baker on Tweet. So, you know, it's great to be recognized by the governor's office for the work that our team did here in Littleton. So, yeah, there were 400 vaccines that were administered, probably 95% of them went to children.
Yeah.
And we have all the addresses, so it was all Littleton and those that may have been part of school choice. So there were some outside of the community, but they go to Littleton schools. So it was a great job. We had the, we had Cindy's of the vax bus, we had a therapy dog, we had the mascot. So it was really just a great community event, so.
Clothes.
Lot of people from both the school and the town side stepped up to make that a reality. And certainly the residents, it was a long line, and, you know, not one complaint is very much appreciated by staff that put that time in. And folks were great, so thank you to the community for being so relaxed and waiting with patience.
All right. I want to echo what Ms. Napoli said about your part of this, which is, there was an email thread the day before about how few vaccines we had, and you said, "I'm going to try to get the vax bus," and the next day it was there.
Yeah. Well, it was the board, though. The board, the board sent me on a mission to get some, increase the vaccine, so carry out with the boards well.
You did it. And that's incredibly important because I know that the vaccine slots were booked in 30 minutes, all of them. And so we wouldn't have had enough without the bus. That was, that was a great win for us.
Yeah.
Excellent work for you and for Dr. Clinchy and his team, too. But, you know, as Matthew just pointed out, you're, you know, we had a gulf between where we wanted to be and where we were going to be, and you made up the difference. And it's great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only other thing I just wanted to reiterate is the Veterans Day ceremony is going to be held on Veterans Day at 11 o'clock, and then there will be a luncheon followed after the ceremony at the VFW Post on Taylor Street, and everybody is welcome to attend that. Thank you.
All right.
And the Veterans Luncheon is being hosted by the Friends of Littleton Veterans. I just wanted to add that. So thank you.
All right. I just have two items in terms of update. I wish you were still here to hear, but I know Selectman Knox and I were able to join with the Water Department at their table, the Mass Water Works Association Awards Banquet, and our own legislator, State Representative Jim Serra was there to receive the Legislator of the Year Award from the Mass Water Works Association for his various good works protecting and solving problems for the communities that, in his district, that need to do things to protect their water supply. And we're obviously very aware of that with our PFAS challenges, but good deeds there being recognized. And then, secondly, Anthony and I, as well as Planning Board Chair Mark Martinari, were able to join with Sal Lopoli today just for kind of a kickoff discussion, a follow-up from the very successful votes at town meeting. His team is true to their past performance, looking to gather input before they submit, you know, plans to the planning board, but they, you know, they're very, I was taken by how mindful they were of the exact comments and questions that came up on town meeting floor. I mean, Sal was speaking right to it. He must have been home watching on television, I guess.
I think so.
And that definitely, you know, seems to be foremost in their mind as they try to develop plans going forward. But the appropriate venue for that, you know, will be before the planning board by and large, although there's probably areas that we'll be involved with.
If I could ask, why didn't the whole board know about this meeting? Why didn't the whole Select Board know about this meeting?
If the, because it would have been, had it been a posted meeting. I mean, I think he just wanted to really show the chair of the Select Board and the Planning Board that he's listening to what the residents wanted, kind of wanted to throw out some ideas as far as what he thought he heard. And at some point, he would be, I think it was discussed, I don't know if you were there still, that he does plan on doing a presentation before both boards.
Yeah. There's no reason that the whole board couldn't have been aware of it in advance, anyway.
I guess I'm, I don't know why the chair is more relevant than any of us. I think that...
And I'm not even the chair. Chuck was going to be there, he couldn't be there.
But I mean, the whole board should be, I don't think that a single member, especially if we haven't discussed it before, should be having those meetings. That's not how this should work. I think that we can't have this communication, lack of communication between, you know, I, yeah.
For one, Matthew, I agree with you, and I had thought that the whole board had been made aware of, that was discussed that that was going to happen, but it didn't happen.
Right. So if I'm, can I just ask, so was it just like an administrative meeting, like talking about next steps? So there wasn't discussion about, I know he was listening to town input, but as far as the, what he's going to bring forward to the town, like, I would really like to be involved, you know, inviting him to the Affordable Housing Trust, so to speak, so that we could have a conversation with him and just making sure he's going through the proper departments. I mean, clearly, the planning board is going to be very much the leader in those discussions. But to Matthew's point, just kind of seeing what was that structure that was decided on what are the next steps during the discussions with Mr. Lopoli.
Yeah, I was just setting up the meeting.
If I could speak on one thing to back you up and what you're saying, too, is that I understand wanting to meet in smaller groups, that's very beneficial, but my only point is, I think we all should have known that they were going. That's...
I'm not even sure that meeting in smaller groups is appropriate in this case. I believe that this is a very important project for the town, and I think everybody should be involved, and we should be absolutely transparent about every conversation that we're having with Mr. Lopoli. It's the only way that this is going to work correctly, in my opinion.
All right. Well, for my part, as I say, I, when I was first made aware of the invite, I think Anthony will acknowledge, I said, "We're going to let all the members of the board know," and for that matter, all the members of the planning board should know as well. And secondly, we were at the meeting right off the bat, I think, today I made it clear that we don't have any authorization to negotiate. Didn't prevent them from floating ideas, but that was, you know, I went on record with that myself, anyway.
I mean, practically speaking, it's, there's always going to be negotiation in a meeting like that. You can't, you can't disconnect it. It's not an information session. It's, you're telling him things that you think about the town or the opinions of people and whatnot, and you, yeah, I think that we would all like to have the opportunity to influence that conversation.
Couldn't agree with you more.
So I, you know, hope that you keep us all in the loop, like, completely going forward in this, in this matter. Thank you.
I was just going to say, so what is the next step?
Well, I had to go to one appointment, so I left. I don't know what...
Just in the process in general, like, what is it?
I think he's, I think he's planning on presenting. Mark was there at a December meeting or something. He's going to, said he's going to coordinate something or go before the planning board.
Can I speak to a second?
Who? Yes, Mark.
I had asked Myron to ask Mr. Lopoli to be on our December meeting, and he refused to come because he wasn't ready. But what he did want to do, he wanted to reach out and get a footprint of what we would expect from him when he came before us. So he suggested that, myself and I suggested that Planning Board and the chair from the Select Board come there just to discuss procedure moving forward. We didn't speak about anything but how we're going to move forward in the next couple of months. So that's why we went to Mr. Lopoli, and Anthony was there as well. Unfortunately, Chuck couldn't join us, but Paul was there. And that's what we spoke about. We didn't speak about the basics of it or anything else, just what he's going to need to move forward, some rendering, some drawings and stuff like that to inform the residents and both boards. As far as moving forward, he is going to try to get on our agenda for an informal discussion with both boards in December. And that's what the whole, just a kickoff to give him a timeframe and what we would expect when he came before us.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see, I guess that's it for member updates. Unless there's anything further. Now we have a joint meeting with the council agent, and sorry to have kept you waiting a little bit. We've had a lot on our agenda tonight. We have more yet to come, too, but thank you for joining us. We do have a project update from LLB Architects relative to the senior center project, and I know Anthony and Cindy, you both are involved with that, so whoever's taking the lead on that, please do.
Liz is going to have it.
Oh, and Liz, of course, and the Friends, and the Council on Aging Board as well.
Good evening again. Got all, everyone here. First of all, thank you very much for accommodating this joint meeting this evening. To say that myself and the Council on Aging Board are, and the Friends Board, are thrilled to be here this evening and be at this point, that's a complete understatement. We are absolutely thrilled. Tonight, we will be, or LLB Architects will be showing some initial draft design concepts of the space for a new building for us. And if you are a resident in this town, you know this, this has been decades in the making. This has been over, I'm looking at Barbara McCray to say, over 30 years in the making to get to this point today. And I have to make some acknowledgements because we wouldn't be here if it weren't for the relentless, tireless advocacy of the Friends Board, of the Council on Aging Board, of the support for the, from the Select Board for making this a priority for this past year, for town administration, for guiding us to get to this point in the first place, and all the staff and volunteers who have worked tirelessly. We've been doing focus groups, surveys, touring modern senior centers and active living centers. We've been out doing community outreach like never before. And right now, this feels like the closest we have ever gotten to making this dream of ours a reality. So I would like to turn this over to LLB, our architectural group, who we've been working with for the presentation. They have been absolutely fabulous to work with, and they are going to be showing us the conceptual designs. And I think Suzanne and Brian are on.
Suzanne or Brian, are you able just to speak so we can test the microphones here in the building?
Yeah, I'm Brian Downey, LLB Architects.
I'm Suzanne Salvo with LLB Architects. Thank you so much for having us. I hope the sound is good.
Great to hear you.
Fantastic.
Yep, so we're excited to be presenting to the joint meeting tonight the current plans that they stand for the Chadda Center. We've been working with the town and with Liz and other members for many months leading up to this. We presented earlier this year an updated plan, conceptually even, dug further into programming since then, really refined the relationships of the spaces to each other, and started to develop the building in three dimensions, which you will see tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Suzanne. in three dimensions, which you will see tonight, so I'm gonna turn it over to Suzanne, who can take us through the site plan and the core plans of the project.
Thanks, Brian, we can advance to the next frame, so I wanna give everyone a sense of orientation here, you can see we have the, the existing town hall center at this bar, your beautiful new library in the upper right with the parking between, and we worked with the subcommittee together to locate the library, and we're so excited about where it is, some of the goals we were trying to achieve were maintaining, maintaining the parking, not lose parking, and maintain as much of the lower field as we could, as possible, and so that resulted in a linear configuration of a plan, and you can see the proposed plan here in white, where the roofs are depicted, some of the things we're really excited about are that you, we envision a pedestrian accessway from the new library to the senior center, and love the way that those two buildings can work biologically together, really create a destination for the town, as you can see, because of the long form, we have an opportunity to create wonderful windows that look across this beautiful view you have on the sloping hill, we would plan to orient the entrance to the building here at the, there's a circle or sort of a half circle where you might drive in, and the idea is that you would enter here, it doesn't look like doors, but through the stable form, and the administrative offices will be on the right, and gathering spaces on the left, and the way the building is configured, you would be entering on grade excessively to a main level with a second level below that, taking advantage of the change in grade, and here you can also see on the left, sort of the serviced area for support of the kitchen and underneath of the library, so we can move on to the next plan, this is the first main level plan, so again, the entrance is here, off the lobby, enter right through, through these double doors into a large lobby, these yellow colors indicate really the usable space, I, I can see now in this slide that they're a little bit hard to read, but the lobby itself would be furnished in a very comfortable, inviting way in which you could circulate around it, the first thing you'll see when you enter the lobby is really just a beautiful vista through glazing, is what's imagined of the beyond, on the right, you'd be entering the administrative wing, so a receptionist would greet you, if you were to go to the left, where you see the word Loja, there is a sitting area in front of the glass that overlooks the parking lot, so it might be a place to wait for friends to arrive, it might be a place to play cards, and it's also serves as a breakout space from these two multipurpose rooms that are, you would access through this corridor, the kitchen is the area in blue at the end on the left, and the service courtyard is further to the left, that's, you know, for vehicular drives, one thing we love about this is that the multipurpose space and the lobby both open out onto a porch, and the porch runs the entire length of the building, providing a space of new nature, meet with friends, and just experience outdoors in a sheltered way, also off the lobby you'll see that there's stairs and elevator, so the receptionist has a very great point of view to see all that's going on and to help the public out and wherever they want to go, we can go to the lower level now, if you would take these stairs down to the lower level, you'd be entering into another common room, we envision this to be outfitted with tubular tables and a variety of sitting seating area types, and off of that would be two exercise rooms, one outfitted with equipment, and one that's more of a flexible type of space, like maybe a good yoga or Pilates, and, and then everything in gray is actually completely submerged below grade, the way we're organizing the building, everything at the front is a walkout basement, more or less, so there's a very, very glossy facade here with doors out that would bring you to outdoor activities, so again, if you were to come down the stairs, circulate through the builder into the area, and go to the left, you, we have two program rooms here, one we think of more of an arts room, and one is a social room, but really they're both very flexible and can serve a variety of purposes, we have one, you can see two areas in blue off on this level, one is the wellness center, that's a small office that we envisioned being used, really in conjunction perhaps with one of the program rooms, if there's maybe a, you know, a program or initiative going on where the seniors might come to meet to, with wellness-related issues, and so that's a comfortable permanent office with some room for meeting inside of it privately, too, and then there's one desk positioned below the stairs, again, just to help some oversight there, and place people can ask questions, and of course the elevator also opens into that space, so I think we can move on to the next, alright, these are our first views of the proposed elevations for the senior center, what you see on the right, or I'm sorry, I should be calling this the Shattuck Center, such a great name, on the right is the library, and in designing the, in the proposed new structure, we were really looking at the forms of, of the new library, and we didn't want to exactly mimic them, but create, create something that speaks to this beautiful new building you have and picks up on many of the elements while yourself being distinct, we were also very cognizant of the scale, and it seemed appropriate to us to just reduce it somewhat, because of the kind of use it has, make it feel a little more cozy and homey, so at the top you'll see the view from the parking lot, and at the bottom you'll see the view from the field at the lower level, so we can go on to the next slide, okay, so this, what you see here is the view if you were driving in the more southerly end of the parking lot, and on the left is the kitchen area with a flat roof, the middle area in gray with the large windows is the Loja I was talking about before, that's your access to the multipurpose room, and also a great place just to sit and socialize and hang out, and the main entrance is here with the gable form, as you can see, we're envisioning it as a very glossy volume on both ends, so that you can really see people coming and going, get a sense of the activities going on inside, and really make it a welcome, convenient, inviting place, let's see, what else, the gable roof with the tan form a little to the left, that's back, that's the multipurpose space, and as you can see, the library form is to the right, this is another view, more from the library end, and in this view we're looking at, really the administration, administrative wing is facing us with the smaller windows, and we really like the idea of approaching from the library and from the parking lot, and the folks inside can have a great view of people coming and going, and anyone who's just there for an appointment has very convenient access to those spaces, okay, next, view from the front?
It's a really great shot showing the different forms and volumes that are being created, and how each of the distinct program elements really kind of have their own ownership, but the buildings themselves still work cohesively as one, next slide.
Here's a view from the rear, you can see the library on the left for contacts, and the vision is that the lower level is built into a sort of glass, a retaining wall with glass in it, we've got a lot of active, active rooms down there that benefit from, you know, to go outdoors, relationship with the outdoors, in the center below the gable form, that's our, our billiard room and common room on the lower level, and on the upper level, that's our, the long porch that runs the length of the building.
Next slide.
Just a little view of the backside, so here you can see the kitchen on the right, and we've got a nice canopy over the, the outdoor porch area to keep the snow off and on that bay, I think it really imagined some nice rocking chairs out there, some, a great gathering place.
But all the outdoor, the doors to the outdoor courts and the outdoor area on the lower level, you know, really begins to activate that space and the building for, for the seniors as, and the, and the community really as it relates to the library, Suzanne mentioned, connecting that via footpath and traffic, really on both levels, you know, elevating the pedestrian travel around the buildings.
I would love the idea of tying into the walking, walking paths in the area, and making them connect into a more comfortable library, let's see, does anyone have any questions or anything they want to add?
Well, I have, just one stylistic question I noticed from the designs we saw a couple of months ago, it looked like there were a lot more gables in that, in the design, this is a beautiful building, but it's a, it's a change in appearance from what we looked at before, was that driven by the topography or some other design choices?
There was a lot of the design choices, I think as Suzanne touched on, we really wanted to be cognizant of the scale, and in talking with Liz and the feeling that we got through those discussions, that we really wanted a comfortable, a more comfortable scaled building, and I don't wanna say simplifying the roofs from the other, from the previous version that you saw, but it was definitely a distinctive design decision to move in this direction and away from that.
Right, I think the flat roof areas also do a couple other things, one is, we, we recognize this as a long building, and by varying the heights of the roof forms and really keeping the tall ceilings where they'd be most desirable, the multipurpose space, the lobby, they were, there's the one view of the elevation where you can really see the sky coming through, I think it's gonna help it feel less really intimidating when you're in front of it, and, and it's more of a human scale, I think it helps a lot. We also are aware that when you, when you put on a big gable roof, there's a lot of area that needs to be conditioned, that's not really going to a civic use, so just looking to hopefully centrally instruct it in a way where we keep that to a minimum.
Liz, I didn't know if there's anything more you wanna add to the presentation?
Yes, please, just very briefly, I think that during this period that seems never-ending of COVID, more than anything that we've seen is that seniors and residents in our community need a place to congregate, they need a place to go to feel less isolated, to reengage with the community, and when I look at this building and I see the natural light that's going to be flowing into it, and imagine the back area where you see the views and you see the leaves changing in the fall, I think this is going to be an inviting space that folks are going to want to come to, to reengage and just socialize, that's what I think when I see it.
And really taking advantage, one thing that we noticed with the new library is when you walk in, that back window, you know, it's just stunning with beautiful views, and I think that's what the discussion was, to try to capture that same beautiful landscape through some nice big glass windows is, really just makes it stand out.
Absolutely.
Alright, I don't know if there's any members from the council that want to add to what's been said, or, yeah, good questions, or board members? I just have one question for the design, it's wonderful, it's a long time coming, but what does it do to the ball field out back?
So, we've had discussions with, with the committee and others in the town as it relates to the ball field, and due to the positioning and the desire to maintain as much of a parking on-site as possible up front, there's only so much land that we were able to work with, so if you go back to that site plan, you can see that where the side of the port and turnaround for the access for the engine might be located, that is currently where the ball field is, so we recognize that that's something that needs to be addressed, we're currently showing the ball field to the right, but I think that we're gonna study that a little bit further, and maybe it stays in its original orientation and gets tucked in kind of at the curve of the access road, so that the, the ball field will, in a capacity, still be there for the youth to play on.
Yeah, one of the things-
We think it's, we think it's a great opportunity, too, if we introduce the shuffleboard and the bocce courts out back, and the porch there, you know, in the fall, to be able to sit out there and have the youth interacting with the Shattuck Center visitors, it, it can be a really, you know, powerful space.
Joe, so that was, a lot of conversation was about the ball field, too, and as to Brian's point, it still has to be studied, but in looking at the space what they currently use as far as that first level after T-ball, I think, which is pitch, which right now that's, that's a pretty big outfield, that's really not being utilized, so could we capture and keep the regulation-sized diamond which a coach pitch needs to teach, but maybe that outfield is just truncated, and considering they don't use it, and that's what they're gonna have to try to figure with the civil engineer, exactly, how could we make a field that has less of an outfield that they don't use, but still have a, a nice place to have a field?
That'd be wonderful, I just wanna, I didn't know whether the baseball and softball had been advised of this, that they're losing a field, and I, I understand they don't need that much in the outfield, but I just wanted to make sure it was situated in a certain way that you could still leave it there, that was all, and it's so minor compared to how great this building will be and how it will service everybody, but it was just a minor thing, it was a minor-
Well, even that porch, you know, that porch, when we first were talking about the porch, was really for the parents to be able to, how nice would it sit out there and watch the ball game, and you know, right now you can't have a grandparent to really go down there, right, it's not ADA accessible, this now would have access on both sides of the building because we would need to have that, and then they could sit there and watch their grandson or what have you play, so, you know, I think that we're really hoping that we can still get that in there, make a nice little miniature field, which would be really cool.
Can I-
Sure, yep.
Make another very small, minor point, well, tolling sport of the senior center, tolling sport's location?
Yeah, we generally do ask folks, I, I think we all know who you are, for the record and for the audience-
Cheryl Kelly Hollinger, Tadawin Road, that hill has been a sledding hill for the past hundred years, so I would, and very popular in the winter, I would ask that your pedestrian walkway, keep that in mind that kids will wanna sled, still sled between the buildings in the winter, so maybe if your pedestrian walkway between the two buildings could keep that in mind.
Joe, that was definitely discussed, too. Joe, that was definitely discussed too. Part of our meetings was trying to.
I'm so glad to hear that.
Trying to keep that hill too.
It means the, the senior center is far more important, but.
But no, we want to still, you know.
I mean, I slided there as a child and I'm ancient.
Right. We, we want to take all those into consideration and try to, you know, try to keep what is important in that site. So certainly that was a big part of our discussions with the hill and going forward as well.
We absolutely want to make this a community destination because you have the beautiful library. If you have the ball field and a little sledding area and the walkway, I mean, it's going to be beautiful. It's going to be, people will want to be here.
Terrific. Good. What next steps and when do we, when are we likely to hear them?
There's still some work to do with the civil engineer. There's still some work with the site. I think the deputy chief, Clancy, has to review still some of the access road. And so there, there's another few weeks of doing that. And then certainly we'll talk to our consultants, our architects and see what the next step will be in the process.
Mark?
Is there a plan for a cost estimate? When will that be coming?
That's the end result of a feasibility study. So we, we're getting towards there.
When, so do we have dates for when we are hitting different milestones going forward from here?
Brian, do you recall the project timeline that we have? We don't have that part of this presentation.
It's not part of this presentation and I think we have to look at it. But I believe that we have at least calculated for two weeks a cost estimation from the time that we got the okay to submit the current design through that process. So that's about where we're at right now.
Obviously that's important to us because the goal is to go to with the annual town meeting with construction funding. So.
Correct.
Trying to move forward and still not take any shortcuts and try to make sure that we capture everything that was mentioned with ball fields and sledding hills and, and everything that's important to the town and still produce quality building for the residents can come to enjoy for years to come.
That's what we're looking for.
Well, yes, Mark.
Can I ask one more practical question? I, I thought our buildings now had to have a southern exposure. Does this building have enough of a southern exposure to pass muster? And the roof line is, is east-west versus north-south. And I thought buildings had to have a southern exposure for potential solar panels and things. And this really had very little on the southern side. So is that something being considered?
We are, we are looking at the solar orientation. The main gable portion of the building does warrant itself a full southern exposure. And that's an area where the solar panels really could be loaded up on and take advantage of that. Once we nailed down this form, quite frankly, we've been massaging it and going back and forth with the committee with a bunch of different forms. And the scale and the presence on, on the site is obviously as important as the, as the green aspect of it, the sustainability side of it. So we try to, we try to take all that into consideration and put forth the best, most appropriate design. But we will continue to, to review that.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, it's becoming a lot more possible to visualize it and that's an exciting thing, especially when we know we, you know, we're aiming toward a, a May voting date on the funding for it. And getting a lot closer. A lot of work to be done along the way, but.
Can I ask one question?
Sure, absolutely, man.
I don't know whether this is for you, Liz, or for L L B. Did you, are you comfortable that there is enough space for administrative offices, especially if you need to expand in the next 10 to 20 years?
Yes. In the, in the design right now, we have extra office space as well as room for volunteer workstations, a little conference room for staff space, as well as a staff break area. So there is room for expansion.
And have you, have you talked about, I mean, I don't know if you need to do this to segment the building off. So for example, if it needs to be closed, but only one room is open late at night for a function, is that, is that something that you've, you've taken into account?
Yes, we, we talked about that at length because we do want this community, this, this building to be accessible to others in the community if they want to hold a meeting, say after hours. So we did talk about like a drop down gate that would close off the administration portion or how to close off the, the stairwell related to.
It's a really beautiful design. I love the, I love the porch. I love the walkout glass wall. I mean, yeah, it's fantastic.
Yeah, to, to close off, we did talk about, you know, some of those lower level rooms, Matthew, would be fogged. So this way, because you have to, because the way the bathrooms are situated, we couldn't have that divide that the library has because we still need people to go there. So we talked about other mitigating strategies to not prevent people from going downstairs. So it's all been part of the discussion and we don't have all the answers yet.
I'm sure, I'm sure you talked about it. I just wanted to.
Yeah, we, we still have to figure some stuff out.
Thank you.
Good.
I will just say also, it looks like the presentation got some loss of quality with the import into the PowerPoint presentation, but the PDF that was sent to you, I believe that the, the text is not all jumbled.
Apologies for that.
Looks pretty good on this end. Great work, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Terrific. Okay. Without further ado and mindful of our.
Paul, can I just ask?
Sure am I, by all means.
The COA board meeting, but before I do that, could I also just express the board's gratitude to everyone? And Liz did a great job, you know, expressing, I think that's next. But I just want to emphasize that because this is a landmark night. We have never thought we'd ever get to this point. So it's a big, big, exciting night for us and we're looking forward to it. There's so many people have been supporting this and working hard and, you know, I'd miss somebody if I tried to name everybody. But just, we really appreciate everybody's help and everybody's support.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for all you are.
And could I also call for the members to, somebody make a motion to officially adjourn our meeting?
Motion adjourn.
I can't tell who said.
That was Gary.
Who said, who said?
Second.
Any different, Mark? And everybody's in favor of adjour, adjourning. Thank you.
And even though you adjourned, you don't have to leave as you will.
But you know what? Hey, nothing can beat this.
You're right. Yeah. Yeah, especially since we're, our next topic is tax classification. The first of our annual two night presentation. First night is usually the informational presentation of the data, the options, the view of where the town's at financially in terms of the, the, the tax picture. And then we follow that up after people have had a chance to digest it with the hearing, which is that scheduled yet?
Scheduled for the 22nd.
22nd. Okay. So the actual hearing at which we will vote will be on the 22nd. But Sean, it looks like since you're first up to the podium, that you'll be making the presentation tonight?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, Kathy.
Fred, Fred Frey know where to be found? He's usually always here for these things.
Must have found the door.
Okay. And I, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no problem. So, yeah, just, just looking to provide some background on the 22 classification hearing. So to provide the board and, and public with some of the trends and the values in terms of, you know, residential, commercial, industrial, personal. And then, you know, see where we're going and, and lay out some of the options there. So some of the stuff we've definitely seen in the past, but I just want to kind of pick, pick out some highlights as we, as we roll through. So if there's any questions, feel free to jump in. All right. So this is a chart that compares in the bars, the average single family home tax bill. So that's on the left, left hand margin. You can see Concord on the left at around 16,000 and then AR on, on the right at around 5,200. So what, what this graph does is it combines the average single family tax bill with the average single family home value on the right hand margin. So you can see as for Littleton, we're in the middle amongst our peer communities within a 10 mile radius. So this is all off of FY '21 data. This will always have a year lag because everyone's doing this, every city in town's doing this process at the same time. So we had average single family home value of 486,000 and an average single family home tax bill of around 8,600.
All right. If you don't mind me interrupting. It's, well, it looks like it's designed like a board game, so I'm going to interpret it as such. The little moving houses up and down, the, see if I've got this right. On, on say ours, for instance, where the position of the house is, which represents the assessed value, correct?
Yep.
Where that is in, in relation to the bar, the longitudinal, vertical bar graph there, does that mean anything other than just the speed of assessed values catching up, you know, assessments catching up with values? Or is there anything proactively that we could do to affect that at all?
So, I mean, I look at it more of like, you know, a value index, sort of a bag for your buck. So, you know, you can compare all the services for each town and, and what you get. But then you can say, all right, for this home, oh geez, let's knock this over. For this home and then in this town, here's kind of the, how you stack up. So that, that's what I kind of like about it is where you can see sort of, all right, I'm paying a ton, a ton in taxes, but my home value is not, you know, high compared to the others. And you can kind of see some of those that really don't flow proportionally.
Like Acton.
Yeah.
And Harvard.
Yep.
Yeah, and other stories. What are, what are we supposed to deduce from that?
So I, I think in a kind of, one of the things on the next, the next slide kind of focuses more on Littleton and shows, shows the trend in how we've been tracking. But I think for this, it really shows that, you know, we're, we're in the middle, middle of the pack amongst, amongst our peers. And, you know, considering our home value, our, our tax bills are definitely with, you know, within sort of that reasonable, reasonable range in comparison.
But the closer the house is to the top, the more, the, the lower the bill in relationship to your assessed value.
Exactly.
Okay. Although, you know, of course that exists in a universe.
Or the higher your taxes are in relation to your assessed value, right?
Well, that's if it's lower, if the house is lower on the, the chart, right? I mean, if it's a, that's exactly the relationship a book can explore there is if it's close to the top, then the va, then the value of your house is not exceeded by your relative tax bill. Not that those are the only considerations out there.
Exactly. It's sort of a proportionality value index there. So it's a, it, you know, it's good and we, something we look at, you know, year after year. So we'll update 22s after everyone's set their, set their tax rates.
Right.
So I could kind of head to the, head to the next one, which is more of a, we'll focus on, focus on us. So this shows some of the, how we stack up statistically. So like I said, we're around 8,600 for the tax ball as a 21, with the median amongst those peers of around 87, almost 8,800. So, you know, we're just about one and a half percent shy on that. So we're really in the, in the middle in terms of, in comparison with our peers.
Like Wobegon. I don't know if I'm the only one old enough to remember that. Flat down the middle, right?
So quick 22 tax levy breakdown. So our prior year levy limits up top there at a little over 42 million, plus the additional two and a half percent increase. New growth came in great. Kathy did a nice job with her team in getting that certified really, really quickly. We had budgeted around 450,000 and it came in at 893. So great work by her, her team there. So that gives us the current levy limit of close to around 43.9 mil. On top of that, we have debt exclusions for, for capital projects. Now ordinarily, that would be around like 1.45 million, but because we're using 160,000 from the debt exclusion stabilization fund, that goes down to 1.25 for, for a total levy of 45,240,803. So this, this next slide shows our values by class. This is all of the total values for the town. I think it's around, I'll have it on a future slide, but I think it's around 2.7 billion, something like that. The big trends that came out in '22, the residential market was very hot, continues to be. But we're going off of a 1121 valuation date. So all the activity that happened, happened prior. So the residential market was up, or the values were up 7.35%. Commercial is down 20, 0.26%. Industrial really fell at negative 7.81%. And personal property dropped about 3% there.
So is the commercial, industrial, is that almost exclusively 550 King Street or is there other, other factors in there?
So, so that's, that's a big chunk of it. When we were doing the sewer analysis, we calculated out that the impact of that would be around 100, 130 bucks on, based on the, the info that we had then. So, yeah, what's really, and Kathy, feel free to jump into on this, but I think some of those big, you know, big ticket items like IBM and some of those bigger.
So we lost some on Taylor Street, 151 and 153. Both of those buildings were demolished. So I lost some value when they were taken down. And we did have some COVID adjustments for certain businesses in town. I was working with Patriot and we decided that we weren't going to go down on everything because not all commercial industrials saw COVID reductions. But the two that mainly popped up were the cinema and the hotel. And so we went down roughly, I mean, over a million on valuation of each one of those. But like I said, the 151, 153 Taylor, losing two big commercial buildings that size were significant and added to the 550 King Street.
Yeah. And the next slide really kind of highlights the CIP change. Now ordinarily, we wouldn't really point this out, but I feel like it gets kind of lost in the shuffle on that previous graph with the, how much the residential takes up. So you can, you can really see while personal went down, that's, that's going to seesaw over time as new businesses take on new capital equipment and then it depreciates and then they add it back on. But for the commercial and industrial, you can see how well we were trending. And we, we kind of knew about this last year, but we're on that assessor's year lag behind. So come '22, we're really seeing that, seeing that significant fall, fall off from last year's values of about, you know, 410,000 on commercial, but then the 21 mil on the industrial. So, so this one shows the values by class. So the biggest thing takeaway out of this is the residential went up by exactly 2% of the total percent of the, the total value base. So you can see of the 2.278 billion, the uptick for residential went from, you know, went up a full, full 2%, compared to previous year. So it's really significant, especially as we, you know, move further along and look to plan on setting the tax rate. Next slide. So here we can see the, going from 77.57% to the 79.57%. So those are numbers we haven't seen since around 2015. So that shows how the residential levy has appreciated in value and in doing so, we'll probably have to take on more of the tax burden. So as I said in that first slide about that home value chart, so we were at $486,000 and values, and single-family home values went up around 6.5% to $518,250. So very significant, around a little over $30,000 there, so. So this one is kind of an anomaly. We're looking at commercial values going up, but it's important to keep in mind, these are excluding sort of the big businesses that Kathy had mentioned. These are more of, you know, small to midsize office spaces, small businesses. So it excludes anything valued under 50K and anything over 2 million. So we still saw appreciation in that market, but more in line with what we would see in normal conditions anyway. Next slide. New growth history, this is part of what Kathy's team works on, is finding that ways to add to the tax base. Usually this comes from new construction or additions, and you can see in the blue bar, the residential is the big driver there with personal being second in gray, and you can see how small the commercial industrial section is. So of the $893,000 revenue generated from new growth for '22, 65% of that came from So I know in part of the tax rate setting processes, we've talked about the shifts. This is an example using last year's information about what we did in the past. So we shifted with last year's rate 8.5% from the residential to the commercial industrial personal property part of the levy. So that happens through the rate setting process. So as a talent, the split rate, that's one of the mechanisms we go through, and there'll be some future options down the road on that too. Next slide. So this one looks almost the same as the last one, except the shift I'm taking this year's numbers and trying to apply the same methodology to it. And legally, we cannot do it because it's over the CIP max factor 1.5. So because of the decline in the commercial, we can't use last year's tax shift. And that just kind of, just try to include that to show kind of how significant it is.
Can you explain that again?
Sure. So this is taking last year's tax levy shift and applying it to the values now. We can't use that same factor because it goes over the 1.5 limit, so.
What I thought you said.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, and so it's a big change. And if you look between these last two slides.
So even, you know, I know you've got a couple of slides later, you're going to get into the scenarios, but the implication of that is if we wanted to offset in the short term, mitigate the loss of the 550 King Street and the other factors until the new development there comes online, it's, the loss is significant enough that we couldn't even do it within the legal allowable range?
Yeah, we're maxed out, and I think if you, if you look at.
We're not maxed out now, but we're beyond that scenario.
Right, correct. So that's sort of, I just kind of wanted to show, it's kind of a dramatization, but like, we can't run the same option as last year legally, so.
Right.
But, yeah, I'll kind of run through some of the high-level options that you guys are used to seeing, and then we can kind of drill down from there and kind of some models and all of that. All right, get on that one. So here's the.
Couple of pages, basically.
So here's, oh yeah, so Paul, that's, so that's on me, I didn't send that out. I should have got that to you guys sooner on that stuff for some of the, those were some of the things I wanted to. So this is kind of built, like, providing some narrative to that, to that last slide where there's, you know, the average single-family tax bill would be up for, around $450 if the commercial values were still static and we did it for last year, whereas now if we did the same thing as last year, it'd be, you know, drastically different, so, with the $540 average impact. So it's kind of like as we were doing the sewer planning process, how the impact of IBM and then the properties that Kathy had mentioned too. So just helps to provide a little bit more context, but as we go forward for new options, Next one real quick. So this just gives us a history of the options, so we can go up to the 1.5 and shows you where we were last year with kind of the 1.378. So those were the, we were using the 1.378 for some of those models in the last one. So the last page.
Before you jump in, the history there shows that we haven't been doing anything dramatically erratic in our shifts the past couple of years.
No, they've been, they've been pretty much around 1.4, you know, averaging out. So it's pretty much, you know, par for the course, it's just what the hub of values have changed so drastically this year. You're going to see on the next slide there too, sort of that high-level options that we've come up with. Obviously, this isn't an exhaustive list, but just helps to show the range. So how we set this up is the single rate at the top, just as sort of a reference point. And then each of the values, each of the rates going from, I guess, most impactful, I'm trying to think of a better word to say, they go from, you know, commercial, unfriendly at the top to commercial, yeah, or, let me just drag that out. You go from commercial friendly at the top to commercial, no, it's so friendly down the bottom. So even at the max, at the 1.5 at the bottom, the residential impact would be around $350 bucks and then commercial would be $2,000. So if we look at some of the middle options, like option A and B, you can see with some of those factors that we're looking at, you know, between, you know, $550 and $600 bucks for the average single-family home residential impact, and then around $900 bucks for the So I will say, I mean, honestly, take a look at some of the list and then just feel free to reach out to me, myself, me, Kathy, Alicia, and we can kind of put, provide a full comprehensive list, or if there's any models that you'd like us to run.
Yeah, that's just not exhaustive, but.
No, there's, yeah.
Infinite possibility.
Yeah, almost. So, yeah, so that, we're flexible there, but I just at least wanted to set the table and show kind of what some of the possibilities are. So any scenario that you'd like us to run, I'm happy to do so.
Can you just see that the values just moved out, you know, to the 40 years, won't fight the, yeah?
Oh, okay. So, yeah, so Alicia just brought up a point about, while this is a short-term pinch, there's also with the potential development at 550 that we know about that, I'm never going to say it's going to lower people's tax bills, but it's going to help have a smoothing effect going forward. So right now, it's kind of ripping the Band-Aid off, but at least there's kind of a light at the end of the tunnel for when that construction gets underway, so.
Kathy, from the assessor's point of view, anything additional to add? I know you obviously had a part in this too.
No, I don't. It's a tough year because the shift is, it's more difficult this year because COVID impacted businesses and when normally you might want to shift, you know what I mean? It's a hard balancing act. I really have no insight. I'm hoping that next year, things turn on a little bit better even before 550 King because Amazon is in the space. So I was able to get a little bit of value for fiscal year '22 because I got the structure itself. I didn't have it as fit up because Amazon came in and added their own building permit and put E to Mow Work. So I'm hoping for fiscal '23, I'll be able to get some of that commercial value back on the books. And I ran a report today from U of U permit, and it looks like our residential is going to be exactly the same for next year. It's going to be pretty identical to this year. So the big difference will be if we can get some personal property growth with Amazon because they have a lot of personal property going in there, and there's going to be another fit-up permit that I'm going to be able to get. So I'm hoping that next year it's going to soften it even before 550 comes on.
Great. So we'll have this informal, before us informal hearing mode on the 22nd, and if members or interested folks want to see different scenarios beyond those, as long as they're within the legally allowed limits, get that information into whomever, Anthony or Alicia or Sean, Kathy, whoever. Board members, any comments, questions at this point?
I want to thank both of you for presenting this, you know, it was very comprehensible and very complete, and I, you know, I think a lot of times your jobs are unsung, so thank you very much for doing this. It's great, and it gives us a real, a real good insight into what we need to, into the hard decision we're going to have to make in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, and tell Fred that this doesn't seem real unless Fred Freund's in the room. All right.
This is always the fun part of the.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anthony, our next topics are under Select Board Discussions, and the first one is the reorg of the Building and Land Use Department, which was voted by Warren Ottek at the June Town Meeting.
Thank you, members of the Select Board, Ed Mullin, Building Commissioner. Tonight, we have just a quick update on where we're at with the land use and buildings, and also wanted to give an express timeline on how we hope to move this forward. So back in June, we did get voted in under the consent agenda for the reorganization of all these departments listed here on the reorg chart. We have new job titles and new structure under the Department of Land Use and Buildings. The top-down structure would be the Director of Land Use and Buildings slash Building Commissioner position. And if you look over to the key, it shows the new position needs to establish a job description. And moving down, Assistant Director also needs a new job description. They have been drafted and presented, but they do need to be worked on and then graded and rated with HR and then presented to the Select Board for a vote. Same with the Division, the Planning Division, the Assistant Town Planner slash Economic Development Coordinator is another position that would need that job description created. One highlight I want to point out is the Office Manager. That position was also in green at one time. It has been created and it was filled, it was actually filled with our Assistant Administrative Assistant, Janet Fairchild, and she has taken on the role with enthusiasm. So we're happy to be one step down the road in this process. If you go over to Health Division, the, it's listed as a Health Agent. We're looking to, you know, when we classify that, that, you know, the description of Sanitarian is in there. You know, that's the push we're going to go for in that direction with feedback from members of the Board of Health to make sure that that's the direction we push that description in. And then moving over to the Conservation Division, the Conservation.
Sanitarian is kind of filling a needed functional position now, and a Health Officer is fully defined as somewhere in the offing, is that, I'm not sure who I'm directing that question at.
So if I may, and of course, welcome Mike's support and input in this. Typically, if you were, you know, you can start at the top with a Health Director, which is a whole other level of expertise and education and background and experience. Health Agent a lot of times is the same as a Sanitarian, up or down, depending on certifications, education, qualification, and experience. So I don't want to just say Sanitarian because I think first glance, sometimes you end up with people not understanding what that is, which might actually put you in a good place when you've advertised, but it could also make it so people don't look at the description. And speaking with our HR Director, Michelle, she said that, you know, this is something we should certainly tackle through the job description process in conjunction with the Board of Health members, so we can get that job description and the working title correct.
I'll speak for the Board of Health, those we've had, our discussions, both of them. What we're dealing with is at least two things simultaneously, which we have to take into account. One is as a result of a.
I shouldn't have asked you to identify yourself.
Okay, I'm sorry. Michael Zeldin, 11 La Land Street, and my official title at the moment, I think, still is Clerk of the Board of Health. Basically, what's happening is that as a result of the meeting, the town meeting in, I guess, June last year, it seems like last year, in June of '22, the relation, the long-term relationship with Neshoba is scheduled, scheduled to end, which means that the, shall we say, the use and the access to a Health Agent and nursing and basically various conduits to the state, basically, all in one package goes away. That's the formal reality of it. So in the intervening time, with the help of Ed Mullin and the Building Commissioner's office, we're undertaking an effort to search for the necessary, shall we say, functional capability and basically fill it in as we move along. So the second aspect here is the town is not yet at the point in terms of density and population, and I'm not suggesting that's what we should aim for, that's what we're at, where a very professional, what we call, Health Director would find the opportunity here and the, what do you call, salary level and all the rest appropriate. On the other hand, as we move forward to June and not having Neshoba here, we have many, many, shall we say, issues to face in terms of problems to face of taking care of the existing, we'll call it mostly, not all, Title V, inspection of restaurants, et cetera, basically, health-related inspection and enforcement operations. At the moment, very frankly, roughly 90% of what we do, what a Health Agent does. So what we're trying to do between now and June is to basically identify a, one or more individuals who could take that position and, as it were, either mature along with us, as characteristic of Police and Fire Department, or someone who has a vision and is willing to join as we grow with us, if that's the case. The third thing is, and it's been mentioned several times, so I want to make sure we're clear on this, that a lot of the economics of this is obviously salary lines and benefits that the town has to absorb over time. And it's, the payment, as where the availability revenue depends on a variety of income that comes from the licensing. Now, the beauty of this particular. Now, the beauty of this particular idea of combining these various functions here, which we definitely support, is that the total amount which, which the town can work to fund a variety of functions now becomes from one central place, certain advantage. However, we've tried to look at the Board of Health of what the contribution to that revenue flow is from the activity directly associated at the moment with, very frankly, Title V and, we hope, or more routine inspections. And we've hit, we've hit the same thing that you've already noted, and that is a slowdown in the number, not, not necessarily the value of what's being constructed, but the number. And the fact is that until very recently, this is a sub, different, a sub-issue, is that until very recently, the Littleton Board of Health, the elected individuals which I represent tonight, only recently has the Board of Health historically, shall we say, become an active participant in this process. So now they're fully engaged. So we're in a position to build something as the town builds. But at the moment, the future is not clear. I can't, we can't project what the housing market will look like. We do know there's turnover of existing houses, so that the Title V inspections and all the rest will gradually turn over. But I can tell you, we've been, we've started to track the revenue flow associated with it, among other things. And at the moment, we're unwilling to say, oh, it's going to be like 2019 or 2020. We have, it's, at the moment, not very great. So I want to make clear that while we're on this hunt for a, an individual, the, shall we say, the adjustment of fees has yet to occur, and projecting how much those fees will cumulatively contribute to the salary lines remains unclear. Got it?
Thank you, Mr. Zeldin. So going through that, we moved on to the Conservation Agent and then the Assistant Conservation Agent. That job description did exist under an Assistant to Conservation Coordinator, so it has to be reworked. We do have, on the next slide, I believe, the, it shows here. So next steps, again, I already mentioned, but the Office Manager position was established, and it has been filled, and the role of the Assistant Administrative Assistant has taken on that role. We need to move forward with preparing job descriptions for the items listed on the org chart that we just reviewed, and then grade those positions. Once they're graded, bring them to a Select Board meeting to gain approval for the grading and job description. Once that's completed, we hope to post the positions and, of course, schedule interviews. If you look at the little example below, you can see that for the Conservation Coordinator, it's, was the title that Amy Green once held. She's for a long time, it's been called the Conservation Agent. I believe that her board refers to her as a Conservation Agent. We just need to update the job description and follow through with that. The Administrative Assistant to Conservation, the new title we're hoping to be is Assistant Conservation Agent. The two new created positions are Assistant Town Planner, Economic Development Coordinator. We need a job description there. Again, Health Agent, we just went over, new job description. The Town Planner is now the Assistant Director of Land Use and Buildings slash Town Planner, and we need to create a new job description, which, again, have been drafted. I think they were actually once reviewed in a packet sent to the Select Board before the Town Meeting vote. And the same with Building Commissioner, now Director of Land Use and Buildings slash Building Commissioner. And again, there's a draft, a draft job description that has been circulated early on in this process. And again, we just need to be tweaked, reviewed, and again, graded and rated. Next slide. Just to give you an idea, we did a fee increase. The Board voted to support a fee increase for the Town of Littleton for building permits. And now you can see in the note on there, Littleton is equal or above average on permit fees. And next slide. You can see that with the fee increase, the residential and commercial rate went up to $13 per thousand. And with that fee increase, the revenue, in an eight-month review comparative, we had generated an additional $150,000 plus of revenue found. And just to, to update you a little more, the net 30 days after this was created, for the ninth month, we had generated an additional $30,000, just to give you an idea. So we're up 180 on revenue collected through, through the fee increase. So it's been significant coming back to the general fund. So that's, that's my presentation in the Board's Packet, but not for, not to be presented here just because of the, the lines, they didn't come out clear when we, when we pulled them up. But there is a, an implementation timeline that we've established, and the Board has it for review, and we're hoping to do this. The, the three major things are the staffing the department, relocating the department, and then budgeting. And we hope to do it all simultaneously. We don't want to try to do them in silos one at a time. We'd like to keep this fluid and do it all at the same time. With the library in its new location, we're hoping to move to the lower level of the old library. I think a lot of people will note that, you know, most building departments or land use and building departments are usually on the first floor of a building, mostly because of the company we keep. And we welcome them in, but they bring a lot of mud and dirt and the boots they wear.
And you have the rear entry over there.
Exactly. We call it the blue door. Will be our door for entrance, you know? So we're hoping to eliminate a lot of the work that our staff in cleaning this building has to do. So one of the reasons that, and it's a bigger space, and we'll need that, that larger space. So that's, that's part of the relocation process. The budgeting, again, when I mentioned that our Office Manager has taken on the, a bigger and larger role, she's really been working hard to combine the budgets of all the departments. We're looking to meet with our Finance Director and go through them. We're hoping that when we combine all the budgets, that we can actually show a decrease in some of the costs associated with independent siloed departments. You know, mostly in certain things that we need to purchase, you know? It's office supplies and stuff like that. But, you know, you can go to one office and find out they have three years of staples, and the other office has three years of eight-and-a-half-by-11 paper. So when you combine these offices, you can say, hey, we can use these together now. So there's things like that that we look forward to, cost savings by modernizing and combining these departments. There was a letter that also went out. It's sent to Town Administrator Anthony Asaldi back on October 8th that explained those numbers and the increase we had. So that was circulated. And also, one of the piece of information is whenever there's a municipal project, we waive the fees. And in that same eight-month period that we generated an additional $150,000, we also waived $230,373 in permit fees for municipal projects. So there's a lot of money that goes out the door that we don't collect, only because it would be a burden to the, to the taxpayer, because they would just collect it on the other end. So on those projects, this, this department and everybody in our office...
The office you now hold is no longer waiving fees for Verizon, though.
Correct. It is no longer waiving fees for Verizon or, or any other municipal enterprise, I shouldn't say enterprise fund, yes, but not for any utility.
Right.
So that has been worked out.
On that topic, and this question may be more for Alicia or Anthony or whomever, the, my guess, I think I know the answer to this, is you've generated for the general fund, but because it's the general fund, additional $150,000. Because you're not, department's not fully up and running, I mean, I appreciate and impressed by the, the phase-in plan, but that isn't going to the Land Use Department, right? It's not dedicated revenue, it's just, it's general revenue, so everyone else is...
The local revenue goes to local receipts.
Right. Okay.
Local receipts is a part of the budget. So if he's, you know, his budget is, you know, going down, he's bringing in more money, it's better for us.
In the short term. Yeah, okay. Well, I appreciate that.
Yeah. So I, I also want to mention that we have a lot of Board members that are also impacted by this, and they're here in support of this moving forward. And I think a lot of the questions that have been asked by all of certain members to us is, what are the next steps? Where are we at? I know I've been asked by members of this Board as well.
Yeah.
So we wanted to give an update and let you know that we're working on it. And now that we are fully staffed in HR and in Finance, that we, we have the workability to get these things done.
All right. Well, I recognize a lot of familiar faces from a variety of regulatory boards, so if anyone wants to chime in or add to the discussion, please, I'm sure we'd be happy to have your input.
I think it sounds like a great idea.
That would be Cheryl Cowley from the ZVA. Cheryl Cowley, how...
I have questions about the Board of Health Agent and whether or not we could sign up with Neshoba Associated Boards of Health for a limited period of time until we work out the details, rather than just dropping them in 20, in the June of '22, if we could maybe go on a year until we work out the details of a new House Health Agent and how it would work.
I know conversations along those lines have happened as recently as today, so...
Okay. Those are, but I, I think that Ed has a fabulous plan, and he knows what he's doing, and has my full support. Next.
Ed and I worked a lot to, you know, firm...
Again, for the, for the record, just to...
I'm sorry, Michelle Lybert, Human Resources Director. I worked with Ed recently to go over the entire presentation. I second what was just said. Ed seems to have a plan, and, you know, he has a lot of support to do this, and we plan on pulling together all the job descriptions.
Yeah, a lot of work there for you, too.
Yes, and rating them all. And I'm fed informed that actually Kathy used to be on the Personnel Board and has a rating system that possibly, hopefully, she can share with us. So we're going to be looking to do all of that with the job descriptions going forward.
Board members, any questions, comments on the status report?
I'm, I'm impressed with the presentation. I, I knew, like, the town voted on this, and I think it's, it should be a priority. There are a couple of positions that I think are very important. I think the Assistant Conservation Agent, I mean, I know that Amy is, is, well, it's overworked, and I think, given all the development and all the resources that we put into permitting houses, we should put more resources into protecting the land that those houses are going on to. So I want to make sure that that, that department is well-staffed. I also have, like, as Ms. Cowley said, I'm, I'm a little nervous about the changeover to the Health Agent. I would be interested in a safety net if, if we can't get it together.
So...
Or if there are other services that we need to have from Neshoba that we could do it, I don't know if we can do it à la carte, or if we just have to pay quarterly or what, but...
So I think Mr. Zeldin could speak to that as well. I just want to say that in conversations with the Town Administrator, Anthony Asaldi, that we have talked about safety gaps if we are not able to fill a position. And I, we, I experienced this as an inspector in Concord. We had a Health Agent that actually went down due to injury, and they actually brought in a, an, a civil engineer, a certified soil evaluator also, and a Sanitarian, who was private contract. And he didn't do a lot of work in Concord and withdrew from any work that he did in Concord for the eight months that he covered for the agent. So there are opportunities to either hire civil engineers that have a sanitary background on a per diem basis, or we can reach out to, I also know that we have a relationship with Green International, they're an engineering firm, and they're our consultant for the Planning Department now. We could also talk with them about coverage, should we be lacking. So there are options outside, and I, I think Mr. Zeldin could speak to the option of whether or not...
Can we jump in? Yeah, because Ed and I were talking about that. We, we believe that if we needed Neshoba to hang on for six months, that, I don't think they'd take our, throw our money away. I'm pretty sure that they'd take it and add on.
Okay.
So, you know, we're hoping that, you know, we have a six-month period, we can, we can get somebody. It's always a challenge, but we're staying optimistic. But worst-case scenario, we do a six-month extension.
Good. Yeah, thank you.
Plus, it gives a little overlap time to work with that new person and be a little bit trained by Neshoba to help, help the process.
Yeah, if you want to go there, because I wanted to ask.
Jeffy, Planning Board. We're, I think, the members of the Planning Board are here to speak in favor of the new Assistant Town Planner position. I think the value of our Planning Department was proved in the last Town Meeting. It could not have been accomplished without a crackerjack planning team. And it's just one person now. So we really think it's a high priority to get that accomplished.
Amen.
Yes, I'm amazed at how much Maren can get, puts together in here.
But, but it shouldn't be all on her, shouldn't it?
It shouldn't be. That's why we're all in trouble. She needs, she needs help. Desperately needs help.
Thank you. And as a, as a former Planning Board member, I can say, I remember all the work that Maren did when I was there, and now that I get to witness it daily, it's, it's a lot. And I do feel like, you know, I've been very fortunate that when we filled the, the local inspector position, you know, I've been able to, to work more on this while, while Mike's out in the field doing a lot of the inspections and the, and the heavy lift, and I can do the, the heavy thinking. So, so I'm enjoying it, and I, and I see the value in it, so I see the value in getting these assistance to the other division managers as well.
All right. Yeah, no, so I don't, I mean, I echo what everybody's saying. I don't think anybody has any issue whatsoever with what you've brought forward. Excellent, excellent plan. Thank you, Mr. Mullin. One of the questions I want to, I had, what is the different, what are we looking at for the Health Agent? Are we looking at a Health Director? Are we looking at a Health Agent? How are we making that determination?
I want to interrupt and just point out that it's not his decision. The process will be directed by the, the Board has statutory authority for health in this town as a Health Office.
I was asking, Mr. Mullin, that's, okay, please don't interrupt me.
Sure. Ms. Natalie, we...
Thank you.
We hope to create the job description, just like with the Board of Health and with the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. All those, all those individuals are agents of those Boards, so they will do their, they will be, you know, approved by those Boards before we can post and advertise. But when we do that, they also have to be graded and rated and approved by your Board.
Right. So is HR involved in that, though, or the Town Administrator?
HR, HR is, that's what we've been working together in the last two weeks, and we're ready to ramp this up. We want to do the presentation tonight to let you know these were next steps, and this is what we're moving into. I know that Michelle got here, and she had an avalanche of work to take care of before she could tackle this for HR. So as she finds room, and I know she's going to make this a priority for us as well to get these things done, so we spoke to it. Timeline-wise, again, I said this is fluid. We want to try to do it all as fast as possible.
Right.
We don't want to, we don't want to push one off and try to do the other.
Well, that was going to be my next point before I was interrupted by Mr. Zeldin. The budget process, where are we at on the budget process?
So the, we're expecting to do a financial forecast on the 22nd and then start presenting first look at a capital plan in December. The budget to do, is it this Friday or last Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday. So the budget to do this Friday.
So the calendar that we were shown and agreed to, what was it, August? Which started with the Board establishing its priorities, and then meeting with the various departments to hear what they had in mind so that we could...
We have a budget calendar.
We have a budget calendar, I mean. But already, but budgets are being developed. Absent that conversation?
Yes, the budgets were...
That's, that's not the plan we were presented or agreed to, but that's a little off-topic, but a very important topic.
Yeah, I, I was thinking about it, because usually, in conjunction with the tax classification process, is when we begin the budget process. And usually, we started out with a joint meeting between the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee, and we figure out, okay, let's get together, what is the timeframe that we want to have going forward? And then at certain points, the Finance Committee usually meets with department heads. Like, we came up with this whole budget calendar.
You know, Alicia's been handled a pile of problems in the Finance Department and stuff that was, she found that was subcontracted out by the last Finance Director. So her time has been really spent on making sure the, the requirements of, that we have to do at Department of Revenue were met, basically the Schedule A, the cash...
Cash certification.
Cash certification. So she's been really stressed and working late into the night, so, so that, it did put a little bit behind where we'd like to be, but we needed to at least stop the conversation and have the departments to start working on, on, on the budgets. And that being, especially with personnel and adjusting those, and kind of the easy things to take into consideration, like the bargaining agreement. So certainly, it's still plenty of time in the process to make any adjustments that, that need to be made, but it just needed to be stopped.
The simple phraseology of adjustments... The simple phraseology of adjustments, we haven't initiated, you know, the process as it was planned and described. And I agree with all the problems that were there, but if work is going on and someone made a conscious decision that the part of the process that involved us stating our priorities in the budget process was.
Nobody's looking to not include the Board. We just want to stop.
Well, if they're already being developed and we haven't been consulted, then that kind of has happened.
Well, there's still plenty of time to have discussions.
All right, well, then the 22nd, we should have the budget on the agenda of the budget process.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And we can discuss the details of how this.
Right, because I was thinking about filling these positions, as you said, as a priority.
Right.
To make sure we have the money for it.
But I appreciate you bringing it up. It's always a problem.
Again, it leads back to, you know, even though our funds go into the general fund, we wanted to show that we were providing our share and trying to do the best we can to support the general fund in any way we can.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Looks like they're hurrying.
I'm just looking at the chat you have on relocating and it's, it looks like a pretty fast thing. Hope they have everything relocated on the 20th of January?
Yes, so we hope to be downstairs and in the, the space is available. The only thing that really needs is carpet. We're, we may request some monies for cubicles and stuff like that, but there's one office in there now. We have a lot of office equipment that we were able to get from HP before the building was torn down, so we could, we could be down there with the office furniture that we have. We just don't have cubicles. We're hoping for a donation from the IBM site. All those cubicles are obviously empty, so we're hoping for a donation for cubicles for us to set up our offices so that there'll be a very small impact for cost for relocating.
My next question.
Yeah, I spoke with IT as well and they said, even with all the drops that we might need, there's already Wi-Fi over there and everything. She's like, it's a small number for IT to set us up as well. Carpet, I think, is the only thing we're really going to need.
That was actually my question as well. I believe Mr. DeCose suggested that he looked at the space and maybe did an informal survey of who could go there and I'm wondering, that's not on the agenda tonight, so maybe we shouldn't talk about it next time?
Uh, right.
But I have gotten questions from several people, Boards and other, and employees about what's going to happen with the library space and I don't think we know what the process is or what the timeline is at this point.
I agree.
So, can we talk about that in the next meeting?
Anthony? But then the agenda's in discussion time for the short, the re-disposition of the space over there?
Ben, thank you for putting this together.
Yeah.
Thank you for working so hard on this reorg. It's obviously got full support and you did a great job.
Thank you very much.
And it's an ongoing effort, we appreciate that, too.
Absolutely. And speaking to the reuse of the old library, should you guys want my assistance anyway, please feel free to reach out.
We'll talk about it. We'll talk about it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, I believe, Anthony, is your lead person on this, the question, appointment of the Assistant and the Town Administrator?
Yes, after several months of working and interviewing, then we need to re-interview and research, we finally have a candidate that we'd like to move forward with, Ms. McDowell, Dawn McDowell, 19 years municipal experience, serving as a permit technician, administrative assistant for Tewksbury's Building Department. She had a great command of customer service, local government, and was a true professional. She's also had some experience as being a Secretary for the Planning Board in Burlington and Tewksbury and also did minute meetings for the Select Board in Tewksbury as well. Ms. McDowell, we're looking to bring her in as a Grade Nine Step Four with four weeks' So normally, anything above a Step Three would have went to the Personnel Board, but what the Personnel Bylaw comes to the Select Board.
She's not yet tonight to be introduced, is she?
No, we figured if this is something that the Board was going to go forward with, that we would bring her in the next time and have her.
Okay.
I was, I was, just to clarify, originally involved in the interview process and I did, we did go through the process. At one point, we did make an offer to somebody that they ended up declining it. Since then, Michelle came on board and my bandwidth was very limited, so I stepped aside with respect to this round of interviewing and applicants, so.
Could you tell me what the current grade is for the position?
It's the same.
Is it? Thanks.
I wouldn't.
I'm sorry, Diane's a five?
She's a Step Five.
Oh, so it'd be one below.
Yeah, I'm intrigued just by the comments in their memo, but I would like to see a resume, too, just to, we could be more familiar with their background. I'm sure she'll be terrific, looks like a great candidate. I would say this, though, a lot of, this is one of those positions that I think a lot of folks in town hope that, you know, there's a chance that some local people can get jobs at Town Hall and other departments and there's been a lot of positions filled over the past six, eight, 10 months and not a lot of local people getting hired. I mean, I, speaking personally, there's the, a lot of positions that require a level of expertise, that, like, we do a very good, appropriate, and aggressive job of finding the right person for the right job, but a lot of the glue that holds Town Hall and town departments together are seeing some familiar faces and the knowledge that people might have that they can grow up in town and whether, whether it's mom or pop or one of the kids can get a job working with the town, it kind of reinforces the notion of community and I don't know that we're doing enough to promote that in our hiring process. So, not specific to this position alone, but it's just a reminder that that's, I'm increasingly thinking that's something we have to address proactively.
Well, it's interesting that you bring that up, Mr. Klevey, because the candidate that had applied for this during the first process was exactly what you just described and they declined the position, so.
Yeah, but there were others that applied, that and other positions, it's just, they just, for whatever reasons, just seemed to be.
Definitely adds something as a candidate, I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
So, it's, yeah.
Anyways, are we looking for action? Is there a vote here, Anthony, or not?
Yes, there is, there is a vote.
Okay, I didn't, it wasn't on my.
It's on the, it'll be on the screen.
Okay. Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Chair, Mr. Assistant Chair, Mr. Attorney General Chair?
I guess so. There wasn't a motion in the packet, that's why I'm, was a little off on that, but there is one here, so, yeah, take a leap of faith and take a motion here.
I move that the Select Board vote to approve the Town Administrator's request to hire the Assistant to the Town Administrator at Grade Nine Step Four with a four week, with four weeks of vacation.
Senator?
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox, and again, that's not, for clarification, it's intently without the name in there, just to appoint the position, is that right? I mean, if you're looking to appoint a person, shouldn't the person's name be in there?
Person's name, yeah, so.
Okay.
I was a little busy last week, Paul, so Joe did the packet and we're trying to do the best we can, so we missed.
Under the bus, Joe, boom.
I think Joe knows I'm not throwing him under the bus. I'm just trying to explain why something's missing.
Well, I'm just trying to, wondering whether you were looking for approval on the grade or whether you were looking for a name in there, so.
Yes, that's the intent, so we can let her know so she could then give her notice if she wanted to continue.
So should I do the motion with the name?
Yeah, you want to amend your own motion there?
Dawn, what was the last name?
McDowell.
Dawn McDowell. I will amend the motion to specify that the applicant is named Dawn McDowell.
Okay, then, second, I'll assume that that's the.
The amendment?
Amendment's.
Second.
Yep. All those in favor as the, of the motion as amended by the motioner?
Clerk?
What time is it?
The clerk, yes, exactly. Any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, Ms. McDowell, welcome aboard. Good term, motioner.
Motioner.
I think it's actually accurate.
I don't think it's a word.
No, it is, it is. Check it out.
I'm not going to actually refute you whatsoever with that.
All right, terrific. And the next Fire Chief Hiring Process, I know we've got a lot of documentation here on the three entities that have been contacted and been in communication with us to do the assessment centers and the other, other details and hear about the position, job description, et cetera. Anthony, you're taking the lead in presenting this. I know we also have Joe and Matthew were involved as well, so I don't know how you're passing. And Michelle, of course, why not?
Why not? So I will keep this very brief, I know everyone's tired, so, as you know, we are currently amidst our search for our Fire Chief. The process has started. We have posted the position on our town website as well as the Mass Municipal Association website and the Massachusetts Fire Chief's website. The deadline for the posting is November 30th, which is a Tuesday, so we are since collecting all of the applications. We'll be sorting through them, we will be redacting any names, making numbers so nobody knows any names. And tonight, you have in front of you three proposals to, for assessment center firms. The first one being Municipal Resources, led by Brian Duggan and Bob Lumer. These, they're joining virtually. And then you have John Perro Consulting and Associates, he is actually here in person to do his presentation. And then you have Wayne Sampson joining from Public Safety Consultants, who is also joining virtually. I did ask them to keep their presentation to five minutes as I know we are running low on time. I don't know if Brian, you want to go first as you are on our list first?
Sure.
Welcome, Brian.
I'd like to introduce myself, I'm Brian Duggan, Director of Fire Services for MRI and I'm joined by Bob Lumer, I'll let him say hello here.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, folks. Pleased to meet you all.
So Bob and I are two members that would be on this project team. We're both Massachusetts Fire Service practitioners and have served as Fire Chief in multiple Massachusetts communities for more years than I think we both care to remember, but we've also worked for the Department of Fire Services for well over 30 years, developing content and senior programs as well as training fire officers and running the Chief Fire Officer Management Program. Certainly, more information is available through Michelle on our entire team, should the Board wish it, but I know the thought is to be brief, so I'm going to try and keep the presentation to about five minutes here if we can. So, can we go to the next slide, Anthony? So MRI is a wide-based company, it's a New Hampshire-based company that has Massachusetts roots through Bob, I, and some others. I've actually worked for MRI for well over two decades and some of the things that the organization does is listed that there are many strategic planning categories, everything from assessments, recruitments, risk analysis, studies that we do, and we've been very active in a New England-centric footprint. Next slide. So in terms of recent fire service assessments, we've done a number, as I said, the company itself goes back more than 25 years, but we've been quite active and it's sort of a growing industry. The list in white are recent projects and then the others are within the last year or two, but we have several more to offer and again, I think I sent Michelle 15 or 16 pages of references that you're welcome to peruse. Next slide. So in terms of the project team, obviously Bob and I would co-manage the project. Bob resides in Clinton and would be relatively close. In addition, we have an active Fire Chief from Western Mass, Chris Norris, and he is also serving as sort of some of our content in that he just received his doctorate, so in terms of validation and really constructing the assessment center, he's very intricately involved in that. And then we offer communities another option of bringing in a Town Manager and the Town Manager listed is an active Town Manager in Massachusetts, but we have several people to draw from. Michael was very interested in this project and we provide a community, some communities want a Town Manager represented in the assessment center, others do not. So we can either go with all fire service practitioners or a mix. I actually like the mix and find that it's very valuable to reach out to a Town Manager and include them. Next slide. Uh-oh, something went wrong.
Pull it back up. Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, well, there are a couple of others. Let me just pull it up on mine.
It was single-day assessment center description next, I think, that's what's in the packet.
Right.
Didn't get embedded.
Right, so in your packet that I provided to Michelle, what we've proposed through Michelle is a single-day assessment for up to five candidates, five exercises to be included in that, and all of our work is custom-developed content around the needs of the community and we try and provide feedback to the community based on our scoring matrix and give you ideas of how a candidate has really excelled and areas that are needed for professional development as well. So not only do you have sort of a candidate profile from multiple exercises or viewpoints, but you also have an idea of what would this candidate need to be successful in the job in the long term in terms of professional development. And you get that multi-dimensional view through an assessment center. Like I said, I've been doing assessment centers for more than 20 years and I am a staunch advocate of what it provides you for looking at a candidate through job-related exercises and, in essence, bringing them to the table of doing the job and seeing how they do. Next slide. Well, hold on.
Do you want to let Brian, Joe, want to let him?
Yeah.
Do you want to have him share his screen?
What sets MRI apart?
Yeah, so MRI is a company that does no marketing. Our business is built strictly on satisfaction and reputation. Again, we've had more than 25 years' experience and we've completed more than 200 fire-based assessment centers and look forward to sort of customizing what we do as a product. We have experience both as Chief Fire Officers and assessors in similar-sized communities within the area and that gives you sort of an overview. In terms of how we approach things, we approach every project as a partnership and in terms of, with Lilton, we want to do interviews prior to development so we really get a pulse of what's going on, get some customized community information to integrate into the process. We conduct a candidate orientation so that candidates are well-prepared and then we work with the town to select a venue. So in terms of timeline, we're sort of ready to go. We could work into early 2022. I know Michelle had mentioned perhaps March would be a target, so we can certainly do that, we could do it earlier as well or work with whatever the towns needs are and that like. All right, and I think that above concludes the presentation, so I'm probably at just over five minutes, I'd be happy to answer any questions if they're exceptionally difficult, I'll let Bob answer those.
Well, you impressed with both your brevity and your ability to deal with the challenges of the Zoom, so.
Yeah.
How does the Board want to handle this? Questions of the first, I guess that's probably logically the way to go with these.
I don't have any questions.
Joe? Not right now.
I was just going to ask, how many members do you have on the team the day of the assessment center?
There'd be three people on the team and depending on the number of candidates, there'd be one facilitator if we had more than four candidates, but three assessors, it would either be two fire service practitioners and a Town Manager or, at your choice, three fire service practitioners.
Okay. Great, thank you.
All right, yeah. Do we have an ability to keep him in case we want to have any follow-up questions while going to another one or no, we're not?
He can go back in the waiting, just as a participant.
We don't have it set up as webinar for here, so basically, if they just turn off their camera, then the next people will, will turn on theirs and they'll start speaking, they'll rotate off the screen. rotate off the screen.
Okay. Did you catch that there? We're not sure if we're going to get back to you or not, but we want to keep you available in case we do.
Yeah, okay. We're more than happy to do that. I'm actually going to mute out and shut camera off here.
Great. And Joe, you can hold him if need be?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, and...
So next, we'll just go in order, just because John's here and it's second on your memo.
Yeah.
So John Perrow, if you want to come up?
Joe, you have?
He doesn't.
Trying to keep within the five minutes. I can't, is that all right?
Yeah, and it may be something you've already had, unless you've added something to it.
No, I just wanted to make sure you had something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, I'm Jack Perrow. I'm the principal for Perrow Consulting. We're very local. We're a local company, right out of Chelmsford, so just right around the, right around the corner. So as you can see, in the, the assessment center process is, you know, a lot of assessment centers are, are the same as far as the exercises go. You have your typical exercises, your in-basket, all kinds of role-playing, group exercises, written exercises, oral, emergency incident simulation, interviews. We do all those, but the big thing is what's behind the exercises. And so we custom-design those to every community we go to. You know, I have this saying, "If you've seen one fire department, you've seen one fire department," because they're all different. So what we typically do is, I'll be the project manager. I'll work with the town manager or the town administrator, and he will tell me who to go to, who to talk to, and we'll turn around and design exercises to meet the needs of Littleton and the Littleton Fire Department. So everything will be custom-designed to meet, meet that. We typically do three to five exercises. Those are your choice. When you pick them out, sometimes the exercises are combined. For example, you may have a written exercise that also has an oral piece to it, so they have to report out on their oral exercise. On the second page, you can see what, at the bottom of the first and the second, you can see what skills those, those do, as far as how many people will be on the project. I'll be the project manager, and typically, we run four assessors for the assessment center, and I'll also be the administrator of the assessment center. So we'll have five people on site, and again, we can do whatever mix you want. All fire service professionals, town managers, police chiefs, it's pretty much what the, what the community's looking for. And we have, you know, a lot of assessors that we use over the years, and they're all quality assessors and have done, done a lot of assessments. A little bit about myself, 40 years in the fire service. I served over 25 years as a fire chief, 17 of those in Chelmsford. I was their first outside chief. I've served as president of the International Association of Fire Chiefs, and I've been doing assessment centers for over 25 years. So, and all my assessors that, all the assessors that we use are considered top in their field and have an awful lot of experience with those. Four people, you'll, you know, have 160 years of experience, probably. So, or at least 120. On the third page, you can see the assessment centers we've done over the last year and a half, two years. There's a few more added to this one that we just actually got this week. And then there's a quick bio on myself. I think the biggest thing we pride ourselves in is that we put together an excellent, a top-notch assessment center at a very reasonable cost. So I'd be happy to stay around. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, I'll leave it to the board. Questions?
No questions for me. Thank you.
All right. Just as we have the folks from MRI hanging around in virtual, would the board like to have Mr. Perrow stay too, if there's any follow-up questions, or not?
I was just, well, I actually just wanted to ask him.
Sure.
So what would the team of assessors be comprised of?
We'd decide that with the town.
Okay.
So it could be, could be four fire chiefs, if you wanted.
Okay.
Could be your fire chief, town manager, could be an HR director, whatever you, you decide you feel comfortable with.
Okay. Very perfect. Thank you.
All right, then.
So finally, last but not least, you have Wayne Sampson from Public Safety Consultants.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. My name's Wayne Sampson. I'm with Public Safety Consultants. We've been providing consulting services to municipalities for the last 15 years. We have provided services in over 135 Massachusetts communities. We only service Massachusetts, and we only do public safety. We don't do management studies or internal investigations. We specialize just in the personnel area. We do recruitment, promotional exams, and the assessment centers. Over the last 15 years, we have done in excess of 350 assessment centers and promotional processes for both police and fire. We, it was, it was good seeing Chief Duggan. We used to be in a joint town. I haven't seen him in a number of years, but he gave a very good description of the standard process used in all assessment centers. And honestly, no matter what vendor you pick, we have to follow international guidelines for conducting those assessment centers. We have to interview, interview the candidates. We have to do a drop-cast analysis that is specific to your community. And then we pride ourselves on working with local officials to make sure that when we develop our exercises, they are very specific to your community, but also to your individual fire department. Because, as Mr. Perrow said, the culture of every department is always a little bit different. There is no standard process exactly. We take a look at what's going on in your community and in your department, your fire department, and we develop those exercises that are appropriate to meet the needs of your town, but also the unique conditions that exist currently in your fire department. We have all fire chiefs as our assessors. One of the key points that I have, my expertise, my personal expertise is in the law enforcement end. On the fireside, I have the retired state fire marshal, Steve Cohn, as my lead consultant in fire services, and he certainly has brought forward an extraordinary group of quality fire chiefs throughout Massachusetts. While I will be the coordinator for your fire assessment, I cannot tell you exactly who the assessors will be tonight, because I'm always concerned to name people in advance when I don't know who the candidates are. I'm always sensitive to that ethical component, that we have to make sure that we don't pre-pick somebody and then find out that we have an ethical problem after the final candidates are known. But certainly, we would work very closely with your search committee. As you're going through the applications, we would certainly make known to you, in the event that we thought that there was a problem with a candidate in advance, so that you don't waste your time going through that whole process, and do you end up with, whatever your number is, four, five, six, quality candidates that we take to the assessment side? If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer for you.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Board members, any questions in particular?
No.
No, I don't have any.
Great. So how are we to proceed next? Are you anticipating something from us tonight, or Anthony, Michelle, either one of you?
So I'll defer to Anthony. I do just want to point out my role in the assessment center. I have joined assessment centers before, and while I do not delve into the actual exercises, I do sit and observe, just to make sure everything is facilitated appropriately. I'll defer to Anthony.
Yeah, so this is something you certainly can digest and make a decision next meeting. There's no sense of urgency as far as the assessment center. We did post, I think that from the last board meeting, the messages that we got was to point that job description, which we have posted it. We've done a community profile that attaches to that job description. So the clock start is ticking. So you're under no obligation right now to make a decision.
Okay. How about our committee members?
Well, personally, I didn't even think we'd make a choice tonight anyway. I thought this was, we had some discussion on how to set the next stage up. As you had said last time, Mr. Chairman, that you wanted to have a night, have the whole board make a choice on how we set this up and move forward. So that's what I thought our role was tonight, was to look through this and make that choice.
And that's fine.
I agree with Mr. Knox 100%.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is very helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Extremely helpful.
I was involved in the police chief hiring process and got to observe that assessment center. So this is very helpful to have the applicants come in and make presentations to us. Thank you for that.
Okay. But now, there was other information in the, included in the packets. I'm not sure if there's other topics you want to touch on, on the general topic of the hiring process, or?
Well, we talked about, the only other item, I mean, and I think that the representatives of the, of the consultants, I don't know if we have any more questions for them.
I don't know whether to keep them hanging on.
Yeah, no.
Thank you. Appreciate that all.
So I do want to very thank you to all of them for their patience, because I know we were running behind, so thank you for...
Thank you very much for hanging on.
The only other item I wanted to, to touch on was the, a discussion about the membership of the committee, which I think we, we talked about briefly at the last meeting, but I don't think we really decided on a format specifically. Is that, is my memory correct?
Yeah. I mean, it was, I remember my own concern was not that there was anything particular in the makeup of it that I objected to, other than the fact that we were being shown it that night, and then, and it was moving along kind of quick. The other point too is, and I don't even consider this a big point, although it was, I think, worthy of discussion, is ordinarily, if we're appointing a committee and we're going to have general members, we'll put it out there for folks to show interest, but you, you folks had decided on a model that had identified people in advance. So I guess I would appreciate hearing, you know, the rationale behind that.
That was, I think that that should not have been, that should not have been presented as a, as a, as a done deal. That was, those were unfortunate, it was an unfortunate document malfunction, where I did not, I did not correctly state that that was, that those were examples of people who would have the qualifications we were seeking, and not, we weren't specifically asking.
Okay.
So this is on, for the hiring committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you refresh my memory?
Citizens-at-large. I think we, I believe we wanted to have two citizens-at-large.
Okay.
Ideally...
Now, of all the documents that are here, that's not one of the documents we have in here, right?
No, because I don't think we, yeah.
And I know, but you would put something together that was very useful, except for saying that the deals with the two people...
We did have it emailed to us. I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so we, we wanted to have two citizens-at-large with, with some kind of fire safety, public safety experience.
Right.
And, and I believe that the rest of the members were determined?
I can't, I, I don't have that from...
Is it determined by statute, or?
What's the problem?
Oh, you have it. Oh, there's the email.
Wonderful.
I apologize, Matthew. I just, I'm totally blanking.
I probably should have included this and, and covered it.
I mean, I've seen it, so I mean, it's no big deal.
Okay.
Can I see it?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I, you know, I did send it out just before our last meeting, so you may have it in your email, if you want to refer to it later. I guess I would like to, if we can, decide to move forward with that makeup of the committee, just formalize it tonight, so that we can start assembling and advertise for people, for the, for the public members.
I think this looks good.
Okay.
So Cindy, I don't think you were here at that meeting, that that was... Oh, maybe that's what it is, because I'm like... So can you do a little history, that the reason that was generated, or not the reason, but where that's coming from, the membership, is when they did the police chief search? Right. They had a similar membership of five to seven members. It ended up being seven members. They didn't feel it was necessary to maybe make it seven. Yeah, it was too many people. Yeah, I totally agree with you. They dwindled it down to five. I think that's perfect.
Okay. Yep.
I think that looks great.
So do you, do you feel we need a vote on this, or?
Well, we do need to form an official committee, because you're going to have to post meetings and all of that stuff, yeah.
Probably on that, that part of it. So I don't know whether Anthony or Joe, you guys have language there, or whether we're just going to let Matt wing it a little bit on the, on the, but it's okay. I mean, we can clean up the verbiage later.
No, I think...
But just to establish the committee and the makeup of it.
Yeah, so if you can just wing it as far as, and then what the makeup is, is part of the motion.
Are you ready for a motion?
Sure.
So I moved...
Unless there's more discussion.
After we make this motion and it is approved, if it gets approved, does that committee, how do we pick the two people who are going to be?
Well, we probably ought to set a date on it and...
Do we publish for the citizens-at-large, or you had already had two people in mind?
Yeah, but that, I...
So I think just to, if I could interrupt for a minute? Oh, you shouldn't have done that. I got that. The two people that were named was for my benefit, as I was in the meeting, when I'm not that familiar with the town. Just as like an example. So they were giving me examples of, of people that, that could take that role.
We should act like those names aren't on.
Yeah, I got you. Because we'll have to advertise that and then appoint those people.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Clancy?
I apologize. I was out protecting the $2.7 million with one other person that was in town. I'm sorry I missed it. I'm sorry I sat here for three hours, and then at 9:31, I had to leave. But I'm just curious, I, I, do I, as, as like the major stakeholder in what comes out, do I have any input on anything?
You're on.
Well, I can, I know you're forming a committee, but am I just going to watch and then not have a say in who gets picked as chief?
I would prefer you be involved in it.
Yeah.
But I don't, I get the whole, the committee can't be too big, because then it just becomes cumbersome. But I, and I'm just saying, if, even if I, it's possible for me to sit in on meetings, not be part of the show.
Oh, yeah, I mean...
I'm not asking, I'm not asking to be part. I just would like input when needed.
And it's how I interpret it. The committee is, what, five members, which include, read off the membership by, by position, rather, by name?
Two select board, two public-at-large, and one FinCom personnel board.
Okay. But that doesn't preclude, we, obviously, we expect Anthony's going to be involved, Michelle's going to be involved, and I would expect you're going to be involved.
Okay.
It's all, all staff folks that should be...
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, is that satisfactory to you?
Yeah. I just didn't want to, like, make a motion and then go ahead.
So it's almost like the, the, the board members are the non-logical ones, not the non-automatics. You guys are the automatics to the process, and then the, you know, the citizens and the board members are the others.
I'll bump myself to observer two. You can be observer one.
Oh, wow, what a title. That one, yeah.
Well, hopefully, both of you will have more input than observer, but...
No.
Okay.
All right. All right. Are we all on the same page on that?
Okay, so we're going to put something out there to get people's names for the...
Yes.
Those two things.
And then...
Can we do that quickly, so we can have it for next meeting?
Yeah, if our next meeting's on the 20 seconds, I have enough time to advertise it.
Well, what I was just, later on, you're going to be talking about the Board of Health.
Right, same.
So we have to do that. So what we were thinking is that we need a, after the sixth, December 6th meeting, we would need, we were talking about having one the 20th, that we said, well, if we don't need it, then we wouldn't have it. But it looks like you're going to need an appointment either with the 13th, which is a week after our, the meeting on the 6th, or you push it off to the 20th, and then you can do the Board of Health appointment that day.
You're talking about December.
Yeah.
What about the 22nd of November meeting?
It, it depends how, with the Board of Health, we have to do advertisement in the newspaper, so we normally would do it...
Well, I mean, that may be reality for the Board of Health, but what about this committee?
Well, if you want to do it quicker and just throw it on the website...
Assuming you guys want to get, get off the ground.
We had talked about, you know, timetable here.
Yeah.
So it depends how you want to post it.
Yeah. I mean, that's my personal preference. I'll defer to the board, but if there are legal requirements on the Board of Health... I'll defer to the board, but if there are legal requirements on the Board of Health thing that makes that be a little bit longer, fine. But there aren't in this case, so...
So, and you, do you expect...
And recruiting is expected, you know, and we put it out to the public, but there's nothing wrong with you going out, talking to people, any of us for that matter.
Do you expect the resumes will be, we're closing on the 30th of November, is that correct? Are we going to be able to review resumes before that? Or do you, would you, is it better to wait until we're done with the...
It's probably best to wait till you're done, but I can leave it, it's up to you. I mean, I can do it either way. We have about seven right now. It gives you an idea of what's coming.
Yeah, we don't want to reveal them now.
So, if we vote on the 22nd for the, if we start recruiting or, you know, appointing, deciding when people on the 22nd, that would still give us a week and a half until we actually could start reviewing resumes?
Yeah, it's still, as long as we put something out now and try to get people to fill those two positions, then we can go...
Yeah, let's do that and then do the appointment on the 22nd.
I'd love to see you guys already be in the committee forum when the date comes up so that you're ready to go.
Sounds good.
So, normally we would advertise...
So, the position's going to be open until the 30th. If the committee gets appointed on the 22nd, then they have, you know, 10 days or eight days to...
Yeah, I'm talking, we're talking about two different, I was talking about the committee. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, talking about appointing the committee on the 22nd.
Yes.
And then on the 30th is the last date for resumes.
Yeah, and then that gives you guys time to organize and...
And it'll be Thanksgiving, so we're not going to, you know, not a lot's going to happen that week anymore.
Right.
But yes, I think that...
But at least we won't be scrambling to fill the committee after the resumes are already...
Right, so we'll post the, the search for the committee members tomorrow, but the resume, the applications would need due by next Wednesday at the close of business, is how we normally do it. So, we can include it in the board's packet.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. So, now are we ready for a motion?
Absolutely.
So, I move that the select board vote to create a fire chief screening committee consisting of two select board members, two public at large members, and one member FinCom personnel board to review applicants and advise a select board on the candidates for the fire chief.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Great. Progress is being made. And...
Thank you.
And obviously, Michelle, Anthony, and Tom will all be a part of that process too. You had something to add, Mr. Zeldin?
Are you finished with this?
I just wanted to ask Anthony, do you need anything else from us before you advertise for the public members?
No, I think, I think we're fine.
If I could just say one other thing, I do want to let you know is the chief, the Assessment Center firms do meet with you before they do exercises, things like that, so you are involved in the process.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
If you're going to address the Board of Health position, Mike, it's on our agenda coming up. Is that what you were about to get into? No.
The Board, no, it's just, it's a technical question of process.
Yeah.
My question is this, inspired by the exchange with Mr. Chair, with Ms. Napoli...
Yes.
And questioning about the qualifications and listening to the process you're going through, I was wondering, hey, what is, shall we say, the, this board's consideration of finding such a similar thing for, quote, "public health in Littleton" and going through roughly the same process that you've outlined? And number two, the, obviously, the financing of it. I'm just asking the question because it seems to me that that's a pathway that maybe make more sense.
You mean for the, for the potential health agent sanitarian position in the new department?
Well, yes. In other, in other words, the Board of Health, the Board of Health, you're talking about a director, a sanitarian, it's, it's all over the map. And what I'm, what I was impressed by is the, is the way that your approach, I'll call it your approach, is you're drawing on experience from the outside that looks at, takes in what's the community's...
Well, I encourage you to have those discussions as you come up with something. I think the distinction that's worth noting here is, here we have a template. We're operating from a known quantity. We've had fire chiefs before and, you know, we have now, so it's kind of a...
And here, we're sort of, we're migrating, and I think that I share Ms. Napoli's, shall we say, I mean, the town hasn't been through this before. And I think there ought to be a matchup between, I don't want to make more of this, I'm just trying to get a reaction to see whether or not this is something that sits well with you, because this would obviously cost bucks, and I want to make sure that we get paid for it.
Well, I'll be curious to see what you folks come up with.
Sounds like an item for the Board of Health.
All back in your court. It was late at night. Okay. All right. Special Town Meeting follow-ups. Does this look like quick ones, Anthony, correct?
Yes, Joe, you want to run through them? Because she was going to work it really quick.
Good night.
Good night, Joe.
Nice seeing you, Chief.
Thank you.
So, first thing, there's a couple items for specifically that, following Special Town Meeting, we're working on. First, authorization to sell U-14-11. This is a small lot. Currently, right now, I'm working on procurement for HVAC contracts, followed by cleaning contracts, and then also a memorial with veterans. So, I'm looking at pulling together things to be bringing in front of the board the beginning of the year for the board to review. This will end up going out to bid, but would like to review with the board prior to finalizing any documents. The next three items, they're actually in process. Town clerk has provided certification of votes, and I've already been in touch with Town Council so that, the transfer of Volant to Conservation Commission, grant of easement to Littleton Electric, and road acceptance. As long as you all sign this tonight, we can get that taken care of and delivered to Town Council this week so that they can get those things recorded.
None of those require attorney general approval, or all of them require attorney general approval?
None of them are going to require.
Is it not by law changes or anything like that?
Then the next, the next item, unless there was any questions on sort of where we were with the other four articles, ends up being just an opportunity for a general comment as far as recap of Town Meeting.
Do you have a question, Cindy?
Yeah, what did you say about the veterans?
That's, I identified three procurement projects I'm working on. Right now, I have, I'm out to bid for HVAC on-call service.
Yeah.
I'm finalizing going out to bid for cleaning services, and I'm pulling together some of the background information for doing the veterans' memorial work.
World War I.
And then I'll, right, I'll be back in touch with you before finalizing it.
I was thinking about that. I know I sent you some...
I drive by every single morning and I'm like, that's on my radar, every single morning.
Because I couldn't remember if I sent you three or not.
No.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
That was on my list too, Joe, so thank you.
With the recap, just on our meeting after Town Meeting where we kind of just debriefed, the only really subject that came up was around making amendments to bylaws on Town Meeting floor, and Tom really wanted to just bring that up for discussion with, with the moderator, and I think the moderator has agreed to look at that and work with Tom and Joe. They were going to work on it and pull some stuff from other communities and maybe just kind of incorporate a form that people can submit those in advance, because it's really tough to have Town Council vet a bylaw change like that, which could, you know, seriously be impacted by the Attorney General's office. So, all that work could be for, for naught if he really doesn't have that opportunity to truly vet it. So, I think that there'll be more to discuss with that or present as we get closer to the annual.
That was a good meeting. Okay. Anything else there, Anthony?
No, unless anybody else has any questions.
Well, move on to the Town Administrator Assistant, Town Administrator Updates. Some four significant topics there.
Yeah.
Lead us through them, Anthony.
Yeah, sure. And I think they're relatively quick. So, we received notification that Lisa Flanagan is resigned from the Board of Health. What the Board of Health did at their last meeting is they took a vote to notify the Select Board that there is a vacancy. What we do now at this point is, the board instructs me to let the Board of Health know that we're going to convene a meeting. Normally, we do it 30 days. We publish it, and it has to be published in a newspaper.
Because it's a statutory position.
Right. And so, you know, that's where I was getting to that earlier, what if we wanted to do the 13th or the 20th, and even if it's just a one-item agenda, just to get it done before the first of the year. So, if that's the case, just, we would just need to...
If it's only a topic, and maybe the Board of Health has a meeting that same week, we could just meet at one of them.
Jump on this.
Yeah. Look at the calendars, figure that out. But I mean, it's, you know...
Yeah.
We don't have anything else going on.
Right. We can just do it that Wednesday, could be a quick...
You guys meeting pretty well weekly now, Michael?
We're hopefully not much. We're just meeting twice a month. We're meeting, actually, tomorrow. So, that sort of sets the clock for the rest of the meetings. But however, given the importance of this, we have to, you know, we can, we can work something out.
Well, we don't need to know the date tonight, right? We just need to open up.
Well, I need to advertise. So, I just need to notify them of what date that we would pick. So... The 6th, you're going to be doing licenses, so that'll be a busy meeting, because we have to get those done, unless you want to try to push it for the 6th. We're not really advertising for 30 days, but we're...
Well, so, if the Board of Health is meeting every other week, they would meet on the 8th of December, which would be exactly 30 days from tomorrow, and we could...
Well, if that's, if we're going to do the 8th, we might as well just do the 6th. Do it at our meeting.
It wouldn't be 30 days, as you just pointed out.
Well, it's, that's our practice.
Oh, all right. That's not statutory. I thought that was a statutory thing.
No, statutory is that we just have to advertise in the newspaper.
Yeah. Close enough for me.
We'll go with the 6th?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. We'll shoot with the 6th, with applications due into us by that Wednesday, the 1st.
Sound workable for you, Michael, and your board? I mean, you know...
I'm pretty sure we can do the 6th. What's the fallback date? Does it, do you have another one later than January, the following week?
No.
Our next meeting's the 20th.
6th. We're going to advertise a public, we have to advertise the date, so it's going to be the 6th.
No, but after that, I think, do we have another meeting in December?
I'm trying to make sure that we have the members because of the, it's the 6th of December, correct?
Correct. As long as the Select Board notifies, they don't need a quorum present, it's those present at the meeting. So, if it was the five Select Board members and just Mike could be here, then that's what it is.
Right, but we do want to accommodate.
Right. So, but I need to advertise the date when dates are done, so I need a date tonight by the Select Board.
Ah. But in reality, you need a date when people have to apply back by, correct?
Right.
Not really the date that we appoint them.
That would be the 1st.
Right, okay. Well, we'll do it for the 1st with the intention of the meeting being on the 6th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we don't require a quorum for that?
No.
So, the motion is going to reference December 6th, 2021?
December 6th.
Okay. Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Inroom Chair?
Yes.
Inroom Chair?
Should the other date, the posting, the return date be in there in the motion or not? The December 1st date? Reply by?
I get it.
All right.
No.
That's fine.
We're fine. That's just a requirement of our packet date anyways.
Yeah, okay, fine.
Excuse me.
As long as you advertise it that way.
Yep.
I move that the board vote to authorize the Town Administrator to place an ad for the vacant Board of Health position and to schedule the joint appointment meeting for December 6th, 2021.
Second.
The motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Great.
The next thing is really quick too. So, what we did is, after we negotiate, you do what's called an MOA, and then we incorporate that MOA into the collective binding agreements, and then we sign those. So, that's what we've done. Department heads have done that with their respective unions, and we have a, an integrated new collective binding agreement that just needs the board's signatures. So, that'll come around.
Lots of signing.
Lots of signing tonight. Next, if I can, move on to the next item.
Sure.
The next item is, as Paul referenced it earlier, we received the resignation of Chris Stoddard, our DPW Director. So, what we're doing is to hope to get that job posted by the end of the week. Chris did indicate that his last date would be December 1st, but if the, I asked him if he would hang on for a couple days a week until we got somebody and then have an opportunity for that new person to transition a little bit and get Chris's expertise, especially with all the projects going on. So, if that's something that the board's okay with, Chris...
I'm okay with advertising, although I did have a great conversation with Chris, who's not surprisingly thoughtful about his position, and he had thoughts about, you know, what would be in the, serve the town best in terms of that position and how it fits into the structure going forward. And I would encourage that we ask him, you know, on, as he is departing that position, to give us a memo on, on what he, you know... And I would encourage that we ask him, you know, as he is departing that position to give us a memo on what he, you know...
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
What he sees as far as our status in the position and how he thinks...
Transition memo?
Yep, transition, you know, whatever. I don't know what you want to call it, but anyway.
This contract has the wrong titles for the select board. Does that matter? It has last year's. It has Cynthia as the chair, Chuck as the vice chair, and Paul as the clerk. Doesn't matter?
Cindy was actually, when we settled the contract, was the chair.
Fair enough.
Sounds good to me.
As long as it has five signatures on it.
Okay. Anything further there, Anthony?
No.
And then we get the MMA?
Yeah, the MMA conference, I think you referenced that earlier, somebody did. That's January 21st and 22nd. Normally the boards, as enjoyed in the past, I don't know the parameters as far as what's... What's the requirements?
Somebody else did. They're all good. I'm listening.
What the requirements might be as far as masking or vaccination card, I think MMAs has required some of that for if they were going to meet in person. I haven't heard the specifics yet, but it is in person. But it could be that you have to present the vaccination card and, or testing or something to that degree. But, you know, if that's something that the board's interested, we can have Diane circulate the information out and make arrangements for attendance.
Is that something we have to pay for, the town has to pay for?
Town pays for it.
Okay. But the board is welcome to go, if they wish.
So we've gone to that, oh my gosh, I think it's been three years in a row.
Is it useful?
It's really useful. I mean, I have to be honest with you. We've gone, we've taken back things like, I mean, honestly, helping to start the Littleton Coalition Against Addiction. We did, I partnered with Chief Bernard. We started Project Alert one year. I learned about Datatown from Mass Housing Partnership through the trade show. Oh my gosh, the, helping us get the whole marijuana licensing process down. There was just so many benefits to going to that, Matthew, and the speakers are just amazing and...
Okay, that sounds cool.
Yeah, no, it's really...
In the newer memory you are, the more you'll benefit from.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's something certainly I would love to attend this year. There was a couple things on there that I thought would be really helpful.
I always liked the trade show.
The trade show's great. You walk around, you can't believe everybody that's there and the connections you make, so, yeah, it's really helpful.
So I'd be very interested in going.
Okay. So we'll have Diane start circulating.
That's great.
And booking. All right, great.
We're almost there.
Yeah, we have minutes, two sets of minutes, I believe.
Minutes, two sets of minutes.
All right, this is our time.
Thank you.
We need to sign that, Joe.
Yeah. Everyone have a chance to review the minutes?
Yep.
Another good job as always. And Mr. Clark, do you have a motion?
I do.
Did we miss?
No.
I handed some back. I handed some back your way, Paul. Did you tuck them away? There were signatures missing.
There should be, there should be two.
I set them down that way. Did you get them all?
Oh, all right.
Oh, you have the signature page?
There was signatures missing. I threw them back.
Do I miss one?
Nope.
That's just Chuck. Right.
Just Chuck.
Okay, here we go.
And on the second of that.
Okay, thanks. Move that the select board vote to approve the minutes of September 27th and October 18th, 2021.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Do we have another motion, Mr. Nordhaus?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. We're adjourned. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, folks.
Hey, Joe, I've signed both of these.